We don't have a. It's all going. And that's really good. John. I. Something to. We don't have a. Before like. I've got, I've got a lot of. And the, and that's. Hopefully, it's tied to. It's tied to. That would see that as broad as it could be. Two, four. What I'm talking about is. This is the first few. Things in the ground that tries to keep them. You need to think about. Is that a napkin? Is that a napkin? That's all. The maybe was simple times. And we look at it. Thinking of. You know, this is not. But it's really fine. Many, many, most of the ones that. They're, they're, they're. They said, John, I saw in the. Uh, the public. But that really is. There. Whether or not the. It's all. It has developed like. With the. So what's left? Following the last question, you're following the. The ground that's. Always. There's a lot of. Always. Second question is. And therefore. What is the bond? Maybe just.
Is it intended? Or do we recommend that? Because in a situation, development rights just evaporate. They have to be limited to one place or not. And we really. To me, it's kind of confusing the way we're looking at it. So. I just hope everybody maybe can consider that. Think about it. What would we, if we're, we're taking one, I think. Then look at it again. What would we, would we really find best for the valley? Uh, as to these development rights? They continue and get moved around, which is consistent with the idea of. Moving around, like, but that's what we're discussing tonight, isn't it, Charlie?
It is.
Or. If they evaporate and can't move around. Anyways, hopefully, we'll have some thought in there when it comes up again.
I missed the. Sounds like I was second thing, one stuff. So, I'm curious, we're telling like one hundred.
So I, I got in if I was the printer. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so I just throw that out for future thought. Okay. All right. We're one tonight.
Uh, the printer, I think, but we're, we're, I think we're gonna get this going anyway, because. One, two, three, four, five, and I printed ten, so I think that'll work, actually. Um, I pretty double sided and I've got permanent markers, and so if you color on one, you're accidentally gonna color on the other, and maybe that's the way we do this. Close our eyes and see what, what shapes out. Um, so as I mentioned in, in last time's meeting, uh, we talked about this. I wanted to just have a work session with you guys, sit down and let's scribble. Let's, let's, uh, get on our markers and color. Um, we don't know where the boundaries are for TDR, sending areas and receiving areas, except for the village, uh, the form based village areas. And so it's on us to kind of figure out where those lines are. Um, most communities have a future land use map, and a future land use map says, commercial goes here. Residential goes here, uh, high density residential goes over here, and just kind of says, this is how you should zone your area as things change and develop over time. When we tried to create a future land use map for the Ogden Valley, people are so focused on density. And the idea that the color code of the zone that's near them might change to affect the density in their area. It, it, it turned into a little bit of a fight, and I realized at that point. There was no way we were gonna get a general plan adopted. If the subject stayed about density and whether or not density is gonna go next door. To every single person that shows up to the meeting. And so we wanted to get through the rest of the process, but at least the overarching umbrella principles that cover, uh, development regulations moving forward. Um, and then come back to visit this idea of, well, where is it supposed to go? Now, general consensus was that the middle of these village areas should be the area where density should go, and I think the general consensus is. Let's try very hard to see what we do to push, uh, development into these areas. But there are a lot of rights that are out there, spread across, uh, the open spaces on the valley floor. And so folks who look out the window and see a beautiful view of, uh, you know, pastures, they should probably, in their mind, think about houses that will likely be there. In the future, if we aren't successful at moving that density. Being successful at moving that density has, uh, some pretty, uh, intense economic, um. Uh, consequences, economic consequences in terms of. The value of selling, how do you motivate someone to do something? Um, whether or not we're forcing versus asking for voluntary, uh, contributions towards, uh. Uh, transferring, uh, density. And at the end of the day, if we're relying solely on private market forces and voluntary changes, um, there's less predictability, less predictability built into that. If we're relying solely on regulation, I mean, you can, or county commission can adopt rules that say, sorry, you guys can't develop, and you guys can. And that's just, you know, robbing theater to pay Paul. Uh, and so between those two extremes, there is somewhere, some common ground where we can help incentivize a landowner to see the benefit. Of moving, um, the density that might be on their pasture. And incentivize also those who are in these villages to bring it to them, to go and get it. Right? It's a disincentive to develop, it can be perceived as a disincentive to develop right here. If you gotta spend a lot of money in addition to all your development costs, including bringing sewer to Old Town Eden, for example. Uh, if you gotta spend a lot of money to go get your rights as well. And, and so if we wanna see. The ability for these villages to take off, at the very least, we've got to create. An economy in which there is, uh, well, an economy of scale, basically, where. It makes financial sense to move them to those village centers. Now, thinking about TDRs and the way the general plan, where general plan says. No new density unless it's for really, 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 really good reasons, right? Uh, substantially advances the goals and objectives of the plan, I think it's what the general plan says. And so the idea here is how do we move things around without adding density? Now, every other TDR program that I've ever studied, with the exception of one or two. Um. Give incentives for trading. You could build five here if you retired to there. You could build, uh, the farming con station, I think it was, uh, one to, I want to say it was like one to fourteen. You go by one development right off of the shoreline protection zone. You could put fourteen in the farming con station. Um, yeah, snow basin was a one to three. If you take. One down here, you can turn that into three up on the mountainside. Uh. What is that? Mapleton, Mapleton, they've got two, they've got a one to five and a one to seven. Just based on which areas they feel is a higher priority to move density into. Um, but none of these areas are moving one acre here. To one acre over there, they're looking at moving. Uh. An acre of development or a potential acre, single family, uh, lot over here. Into quarter acre development over here. And so it's kind of easy to say, well, let's just look at it in terms of. Landmass, you know, acre to acre. Four over here, one over here, make the transfer. Um, there is one program, uh. It's in, uh, it's the heart of, uh. Wine country in California, uh, that is a one for one transfer, one acre here to one acre here, and that's because they had a twenty or thirty acres on over here. Where the minimum lot size was at one point. Uh, large, and they said, you know what, it makes more sense for the one acres to be over there, not over here. And so let's see if we can get those to move. The economy of that is a, a pretty even split. But if you're asking someone to buy the development right off of a three acre parcel. And turn that into a thirteen hundred square foot condo flat in the middle of, uh, Old Town Eden. I'm telling you, the economy just isn't there, you're, you're not, unless we're looking at philanthropy, and there are people who will do that. There are people who will say, look, I wasn't even planning on developing this, so. Go ahead, well, let's, uh, go ahead and buy the rights for me. And turn it into a condo flat.
I wanna make sure I understand, when you say, so you're saying incentives and you're saying. Buy one here, you can put four here, where are the three coming from?
Sorry, are the other three? You're just, you're just making it up, it's just coming from.
But, but you just said that our plan is very, very specific of no adding density.
So I'm not suggesting we add density.
Okay, sorry, I wanna make sure I was following you, and I'm clearly.
Sorry, so I'm not suggesting we add density, I, I am suggesting that, uh. There's a reason we don't have a TDR program, even though we've been talking about TDRs for twenty-five years now. The market, the economy of moving from a three acre parcel. Or even back in, not be pre ninety-eight, when we were talking about TDRs, a one acre parcel. To a condo flat or to a quarter acre lot, it's just not there. Um.
Charlie, let's pretend for a second. We're not talking about. The density isn't the deal, we're talking about these other places that you've found. They would say. Okay, I'll go buy. The development rights off a three acre parcel and three acre lots now, what? Three, four, five hundred thousand dollars?
It's up there.
Just for the lot?
Yeah.
And I'll bring it into my high density place. And I'll create condo units. But I get, when I pay my three hundred thousand dollars. For that development right over there, I can turn it into. A number of condos. So it makes sense economically.
It does.
Is that, that's what you're saying?
That is why these other programs.
That's why they work.
Yes.
Yeah, and the difficulty is saying. Even for eighty years.
Right?
You wanna have a little grandmother house in your backyard. Go buy a five hundred thousand dollar lot over there and move it here. So that your. Mother-in-law, wherever, can sit in your backyard in a one bedroom, small. Tiny house.
Yeah, you got it.
That you can turn around and sell for. Fifty thousand.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're not gonna get your return on this.
But the difference being, if I'm not mistaken, you don't buy the land, like, right now, we have, I know you said we don't have a TDU program, but we deal with TDs all the time.
Right, we, we.
But the people buy the land, and then they say, for example, I'll only put ten here, and I wanna take the rest and go somewhere else, so we technically have it, we just, but it comes with the land.
Right.
And what you're, what you guys are saying is to be able to buy that. That development right to build your grandmother house. You're not buying that land of that person, that person gets to keep their land, you're just buying their rights.
But economically, that land without the development right is not worth a lot.
I disagree a little bit, because it makes that house, who no longer has a neighbor out their window, very attractive, makes the house more. On the piece of land next to it, that owns that piece of land, more valuable.
You know, the irony of it, if you're looking at what John Lewis is flipping right now. His ten acre lots, uh, up on Osprey and over on Legacy, the nine, ten acre lots, they're going for a million bucks plus. Uh, and you can't find, uh, uh, an acre of land that's going for a million dollars up there. Or, excuse me, it's going.
There, there are.
Really?
Yeah, I, I still think, and I ran a pro forma, I still think the math would hold true, Charlie, the more density would be for more profit, right? Like, that's just the. It would be an exception to the rule if you had a bigger lot and you sold off your density. Like, likely what would be a better use is still the density where the density goes versus, there is a play, of course, economically, for people that land make some of these, if they're not gonna do it, but. Right, pro forma, so to your point, it was. There. The value is, it's just by math. If you take density off that land, it isn't. As valuable.
Right.
By, by money standards, by, by appreciation standards, totally agree, like.
Can't borrow as much against it, you don't have as much liquidity.
I think you're talking about neighbors, neighbors next door land, maybe it's more valuable, because that doesn't have any.
Well, I was just saying, I don't think it loses its value at all, like, completely, but I agree that it's not as valuable, right? I can't sell it for five hundred thousand anymore, but now my house.
Yeah, it sounds.
Right, that's, that was my thing, is I just don't think it's zeroed out.
Right, and for, it's for sure not zeroed out, especially if it's, uh, productive, agricultural productive land. The, uh, the, the way that, uh, the experts or the economists are telling us to calculate that, how is your five year, um, return on investment on your agricultural production? So it's the value of the land, not developable, so let's say it's a three acre parcel, your, your development right is gone, now it's just the value of the raw land undevelopable. Plus five years' worth of economic production. Uh, and that, right there, kind of tells you what your return on investment could be and, and where your. Value can come from in. Whether or not you should sell, what you should market this at.
So you're saying about price point.
Right, yeah, what you're, and, and that's an important thing to consider, because the farmer, let's just say it is, uh, agricultural production. Um, uh, entity that owns the land, the farmer is looking at the value of this differently. It's, what's my five year horizon of production on this property versus what's my five year horizon if I just flip it and develop it and put a house on it, right? Those two things, if, if one is over the other, I mean, they may be looking at twenty years, but let's just pretend they're only looking at the five year horizon. Uh, the, when one tips, scales over the other, economically, the choice is clear, sell it, flip it. Uh, I mean, some farmers wanna be in business for a lot longer, but their children don't. It just seems to be the trend. Um, that's how the farmer's looking at this. Assuming we're talking about farmers, um, and I, I know that, that window is closing a little bit. And the, the buyer, on the other hand. He has to deal with the law of, um, diminishing returns. Right, you build a building, let's just say we're talking about condo flats, you build a building. To get one condo unit out of that building, you've got at least four walls, you've got a foundation, you've got water, you've got sewer, you've got all the hookups that have to come to it. So your capital is huge just to get that one unit in there. And so to turn and sell that as one unit. Uh, your, your ROI is gonna be pretty low, but you sell this two units, well, now you got a little bit more, uh, with only just a little bit more money going into it to make it two. You got ten units, that tenth unit is significantly less, uh, you get more in terms of sales, but it's significantly less valuable for you to go buy that from someone else. Um. At the same rate. So my first TDR, if I come and buy that from you, you've got ten for sale, my first one, in my mind, that is worth gold if I don't have the ability to develop otherwise. But that last one, that tenth one. It, I mean, can I actually break even if I buy it? Uh, considering I've already had to invest all this infrastructure costs in. Also buying it. Will it even met, uh, pencil, uh, when I go to sell it? And so I'm looking at the law of diminishing returns, thinking, all right, your last one's worth. You know, maybe ten percent of what the first one's worth.
But when it flip, because you're going down and then. They should gain value, not, not lose value, right?
In terms of.
You're talking about, uh, let's say a parcel has ten units on it, has ten things on it, right? So they're worth that, and you can transfer all ten off and it stays ag filled forever, right? And ten, unless someone puts more units on it. Where are you just saying that the tenth one has less value than number one?
For the developer to purchase, so his desire, his motivation to purchase that is gonna be far less than that first one. Does that make sense? So. Okay, um, maybe I'm explaining it wrong.
Uh. I'm just trying to figure out the math for someone, and you tell me, on your land, like, if you sold your. I don't know, a pencil one for one, right? And I think that's why. I don't know the idea of trying to get a farmer to sell and leave it ag forever. Like, you go, let's say the basis of some farmland is two million bucks. And it has. Ten units it can go off of it, and those are selling for fifty grand a pop. There's any debt on that land that'll consume that, that service that year, and then now the value of it. I'm trying to figure out how economically makes sense for the valley to encourage that. I don't know that a one for one, and I'm, I'm not proposing more density, I'm just saying, economically speaking. You're incentivizing to move density to these village nodes. How do you economically incentivize it, because on our, on pro forma, wasn't there? Because I heard on your last one, I was running the map while you were doing it.
I'm glad you did.
Anyway, I couldn't get it to pencil, unless your density point has such a high value, that's the only way you could get it.
Precisely. Uh, now, when you're looking at the, the developer versus the farmer, the developer's gonna look at all of these density rights with about the same value. Uh, because he could sell each one of them to a different developer at about the same value, as opposed to that developer's coming and looking at the law of diminishing returns. Um, and so when somebody goes to run a comparable, what are development rights worth, they're looking at. Generally speaking, what are they going for? Um. And so when we're asking a developer to buy development rights in bulk, for example. At some point, they get to a threshold where it's just not as valuable for them to pay fourteen thousand dollars or twenty thousand dollars, or whatever that comparable is. This is not worth it to them to, to try and turn and flip it, because they're not gonna get that return. Um. So knowing the economics behind this is gonna be important for, uh, us to figure out how to make this work. What we are going to see, uh, first off, we're never gonna get a market running if we don't have comparables, right? So something has to be sold and something has to be bought. Uh, there's our first comparable. Uh, it won't stabilize for, I would guess, two to five years, uh, it's just gonna be all over the board, and it's gonna be based on the motivation of. Someone's willingness to sell and someone's willingness to pay. Uh, for example, Ogden City still thinks that they've got about five hundred development rights at the end of Stringtown Road, they bought commercial property, CBR one. Uh, twenty units the acre, if they had modern sewer there, it'd be twenty units the acre. Uh, for, I wanna say it was about four million dollars. Um, divide that out by how many units you could build there, and it's about four thousand dollars per unit. So if they were able to flip. Each unit, sell it to somebody, move them into, let's just say, uh, Old Town, Newtown Eden area, uh, for four thousand dollars a piece, they would be made whole. Uh, I mean, they'd be paid back, actually, uh, so that the value of that was zero, uh, or their investment was zero. Um. They're not even looking for that, they just would rather try and get some of the commercial, I mean, they paid probably four times what they should have on that property at the time. Uh, because it was, um, listed as commercial property.
So how many TDRs do they believe they have?
Right around five hundred.
I was unaware of it, so they have, uh, they bought a ton of land over at the end of Stringtown Road.
Yeah, and that's where their wells are, so really, they're really trying to protect their wells, and they would rather not see any kind of a resort area go in at the end of Stringtown Road, it is zoned for a resort area. So a, um. Savvy developer could potentially come in and. Put a pretty cool, uh, uh, lakeside resort right there, work with poor service, put in docks and all kinds of.
Can't access that anymore, according to last week's meeting.
That, that, that is true. Uh, they would have to have some kind of secondary egress, and that would be interesting for them to figure out, but.
So I'm just thinking from personal experience. Three acres on, you say you've got. Thirty acres. And I've raised hay at least in the past year. All of this. And. Raising hay. In good year, after you go through putting everything out. You're lucky to get. Up at that. I'm lucky to be separated.
You're saying above cost. And you're saying, you're like.
I'm lucky to just have the hay.
This is perfect.
Yeah.
Which would you, I'm sorry, would you say that that's what most of that. Just.
No, I don't know anybody.
That's what I've heard. Yeah, most of what I could say is, I'm just wondering if you.
Certainly, there used to be a lot of dairy farms. By those guys, they even had a living, they had second jobs. Or their dairy farms are second.
Right.
But there's not a lot of money in agriculture.
You can't keep up with big ag anymore.
That I see. So if you face here, okay, I can sell this development. I, I can sell a lot for. Three hundred thousand, five hundred thousand. On three acres. Or I can barely break even to an ag on this. Yeah, I'm not necessarily a developer, right, but ten thousand. No, it's not.
And I've got no one.
See how I can.
Yeah, we do have.
Best reality.
We do have landowners who are interested in retiring. Development rights, um, they just, they just don't wanna have their land built. I think on, on the one hand, I've heard people say, well, if they're not planning on developing their land, then why would we do a TDR program for them? We're not planning on developing it, so it's always gonna stay open, it won't, because at some point in time, their kids will figure it out. And another thing to think about when we're talking about TDRs is, uh, the possibility of retiring rights. Um, Bill White bought all the monastery and retired and is gonna be living tax free for, I don't know how long it is, but, I mean, there's a horizon, but he'll be living tax free for the next little while. Because he put a conservation easement on it, and was able to prove, under the zoning that we have, he had a certain value in that property, and he retired it. So it was a, it was a, uh, community donation, essentially, is why the IRS used that.
And so currently, that's done through the Ogden Valley Land Trust, is that correct?
It could be the land trust, it could be any other conservation entity as well, I think it has to be. Some kind of conservation entity, like.
Unless we create a retirement program.
Yeah, yeah, we would, like, well, we would. Probably qualify as that, like, if we had some kind of a conservation easement as it as well, on it as well, as a governmental agency, I think we would call, qualify as well, but a nonprofit who's set up specifically to keep it open and keep it from developing. Um, that's, uh, yeah, that, that's the kind of program, and there's a few, uh, nonprofits, for example. And. Or other governmental agencies, uh, DWR has conservation instincts about right now. Um. That couple of others.
Really, I don't think it's, yeah, I think a TDR program makes sense, I think for people that wanna swap, and. I'm just wanting the whole big plan, a master plan to be able to move it. How? How do you economically, that makes sense for anybody, that's, I, I, I like the idea of being able to move, and I think there is a place for it, because you're seeing current applicants move, right, right?
Yep, yep.
So there's definitely a place for it, I just trying to move, how many, what's our big number?
Uh, total bill out of got sixteen.
That's a lot.
In, uh, no, that's, that's total.
Oh, okay, how many, I guess, how many?
We're probably about, uh, a third of the way there, so we probably got eight thousands of that.
And again, I wanna make sure, your guys are doing, that you guys, we, we are doing, we're discussing this because we're also talking about now the. The one and two development rights, people who have. Smaller properties, right now, people are doing it, you know, and as you mentioned, John, so like, he bought big geese of land.
In Osprey.
Right, like, Osprey bought that, he's only doing sixty, but he's banking the others, or he's putting them into the zone of, or quicker, wherever he's putting them. So it's happening now, but what we're talking about here is, I just want to make sure, we're talking about creating a program, because when you stop doing the big, huge parcels of land, we got little ones. And how do we make that work, is that what you're talking, is that plan here?
In part, so John, John is doing it. There aren't. The rules do exist if he is transferring those CW land units into a form based village.
Sure, CW, that's that other.
That's the, the corner, yeah, what, sorry, were you not thinking of the corner one, that's the only one that he's currently.
Not John, though, that's.
That's, I didn't think John's involved with that, John's, I just talking about Osprey.
I'm sorry.
We're talking about Osprey, how John did bigger lots, and.
Like, he bought big portions of land.
That's all aspirational.
It's aspiration.
The, the retirement of those units is aspirational, we don't have a program.
Wasn't talking about that, he didn't, to my knowledge, he has those. And he's moving them.
Okay.
I, it's in the, I saw, remember reading in the development, or he has X amount of TDRs, based on the fact that he bought X, three hundred acres of land, and he's building sixty units, and he's gonna.
So that's more the concept, Charlie, the concept is someone, to your point, uses, doesn't use their total density, so like, bank density, and what you're saying is people need to move it, but that's. It's not the big play, it's the onesie twosies.
That's what I'm asking, what this is about.
Get rid of his extra three or four that's on there, and you start to bank them, because you can sell them for ten grand.
Right, which, and at that point, because of economies of scale, that doesn't work financially, because the bigger pieces of land, so far, people are doing.
My opinion, I could be doing the math.
So that makes sense.
I would scale back a little bit, the bigger pieces of land people aren't doing, unless they've got the form based zone, there is no code right now that exists that allows them. To do that. So. I'm not aware of a development agreement on Osprey, are you aware of a Osprey development agreement, Coral?
I don't think so.
Sorry, I maybe I use the wrong terminology.
Oh, no, it's okay, um, so there shouldn't be a development agreement or any kind of agreement out there that says any units are available for transfer, unless we're talking about Nordic.
But that's what you mean, be developed.
But that's what, that's, so the answer to your question is, that is what this is being developed for, to create the ability for that to happen.
Okay, sorry, every meeting I've been in, we talk about TDRs, and now it sounds like you're saying they don't really technically exist yet, but we've been discussing them and voting on them.
So let's go.
Like, voting on, you guys, I stepped out of the room, and you guys were holding a vote on whether they could be moved from this place to this place and whatever, and.
Talking about Johns and Wolf Creek.
A different.
Talk about Wolf Creek.
They helped me, Wolf Creek, okay.
And, but I'm just, I'm so, I'm just surprised to hear, it sounds like they don't exist, and I'm like, we've been voting on them the past couple months.
So, so the authority that the county has to create a TDR ordinance is the same authority the county is using to create a private development agreement. Between the county and a private developer.
Okay.
So we're creating special rules unique to Kobe Ranch. Or over on CW land, if that transfer does happen, special rules for them. And why do we have special rules for them? Because we don't have this program, right? If we had this in place, they would. If we had this in place, they would just all.
Okay, all right.
Maybe it'll help us. If, if we go back to the very broad view. And that was part of the, um, general plan, leading up to the general plan, the idea that Charlie's famous, you have to hear Doctor with his measles man.
I didn't name it that.
It's a little red dot everywhere, something people do.
Okay.
And the discussion then was, do we want the measles type developments or do we want more? Uh, the European type, there's the village in Europe with the, where the farmers all live. And then they go out into their open beach and we like, we pay money to fly over there to see that people who's created. And that's what this idea came up into. Well, let's figure out some way we can transfer it and then let people, cause T D Rs, when they first came out, was anybody going to receive?
There, that's my first thing out.
You worked on that.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
All part of your time.
Maybe. Cause the idea was, we've been getting away from the measles, if we could plus the measles here by some mechanism, right? There's these less measles back here. Right?
That's, that's right.
Gives us open space and that we talked about. Almost.
Yeah.
And that ended up being the general plan. Who would have encouraged open space?
Right.
One of the ways we get there is land press, not voluntary, that helps in confidence. There's always been a discussion of, well, maybe this T D R, that might be one of the methods that could be used to generate some open space. There was even taught or mentioned in the general plan, the idea that these, they call them moles, I think originally. It's a place where things have kind of congregated, the market, there's a group said that there's been a congregation. And Wolf Creek and Nordic, nobody's seen, were identified in the plan because that's where the market was kind of congregating them. Back when it developed and when it succeeded. So here we are trying to come up with a general thing, how could we make T D Rs work? As one of the methods by which we. Open space, wasn't too old or.
Right.
And what the heck, how we make it work?
Uh, since you're doing a bit of a history lesson, which I appreciate very much, um, I, I came into the valley, um, before, just a year or two before the general plan of fifteen was adopted. And I did, that's mine, that's where my history starts with the valley in two thousand fourteen, fifteen. Um, I've been getting questions, um, whether through the public comments or whatever, asking about the agreement of where these open spaces were to be, I read the general plan, again, towards the beginning of mine, getting into the valley. Were these villages, right? By the time I came in, it was not there anymore, but still, it was better than. Right, uh, Wolf Creek, Nordic, what you just mentioned. Um, there's a lot of questions that are coming out of the community right now saying, um, why are we creating open space on the valley floor and putting on hillsides? Other people said you're supposed to take hill sides and putting it on the floor. Is there any history for that? Because I, I'm only aware of the seven villages.
In history, I'm aware of. And they have some practice put back, but I don't appear forty-two years. When, the first thing I heard about this, we don't want it here, we want it here. It was, we don't want any hillsides where we can see it, we want it on the valley.
Okay.
Maybe it was started out, we weren't on the valley, we weren't on the hillside, can't tell. And then it was, no, a few years later, we don't want it on the hillside where we can see it, we want it on the valley. And now it's kind of, we don't want it on the valley, well, we want it on the hillside.
Right, I just wanted to follow with that.
Yeah, so it's, it's fluid, it's.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a gauge on, um, as far as the flip-flopping goes, I don't think it's binary. I think you've got just different camps. And different camps become more vocal at certain times.
Okay, so it's not a clear.
I think originally they wanted to have a lot of farming, a lot of farming at T D R. We don't want them down here. Give it up for them, we put them on the hillside where we can't farm. And then it is, we've got a few on the hillside as well. I don't want them down here, I don't have to see them, I don't want them on ridges.
I think the moral of the story is we don't wanna see it anywhere, anytime, for any reason, right?
But they exist somewhere, so, oh, they have to, but so the, I remember in my reading of the valley plan, line by line, it very specifically says that when you come into the valley, you wanna be able to have a feel of open space. So that would make it sound like, it doesn't say specifically where to have them and not have them, but certain places like maybe coming up out of the canyon or something like that.
You gave someone.
You know, uh, but, but it's, it's, it's vague, but so I guess with all the questions coming from the community of, you know, this controversy. Uh, empty the floor, put it on the hills, empty the hills, put it on the floor.
I don't know, but it was, so it applied, what, the grade in the farm, it was, it was back then. But generally, I, I, I would be surprised if it wasn't for the sun. But I, I don't.
Okay.
I, I do know. Oh, it's interesting to observe with this Kobe Ranch thing.
Okay, I don't know, I think that's kind of stepping up. But that's okay, go ahead.
Well, nobody wants it.
That I've heard.
I mean, if you're, if you're saying, okay, let's move everything toward these villages that were identified back then. Well, Kobe Ranch is kind of, right, I mean, right there and eating and Old Town, Newtown, and the commercial area. And Wolf Creek, it's just right there, but no, we don't want it here. Well, if we're gonna move them somewhere, there's gotta be a place to move. And probably nobody wants it.
I, I think that's fair to say, and that was very clear, uh, when we tried to create a future language map.
A future language.
Future language map that said, this is where your density should go and this is where you should leave it open. So we backed off on the future language map and we split that map up. Uh, and so basically, the resulting maps that you see in the general plan, we've got a, a commercial villages, which people generally agreed on. We've got existing open spaces and open spaces valuable for keeping, or sorry, land, keep it valuable for keeping open. And the way we created that map was simple, is it ten acres and vacant, then it's on the map, then everything else, uh, was left off the map. Uh, we've got a map that shows parks and recreation and tracts. Uh, when you stitch all that stuff together, that generally makes a future language map. It just doesn't make crystal clear lines to say, this is where the residential ends and the open space begins. The plan then also says, because we couldn't get to that map, at some point in time, we need to come back and revisit it. And when that map is created, that can be the baseline for how our T D R.
Charlie, you said something really interesting about the Ogden City property. As I recall back in the general plan, then, the idea was, there may be other village areas that pop up through market forces. And then we haven't thought of, and maybe some of them will kind of disappear, like the C W.
That's right, that's right.
Kind of, it was never locked to be locked in stone in those twenty sixteen or fifteen, this guy.
That's right.
And so if Ogden City wants to come along, we wanna have a waterfront resort here. We're gonna solve the problems of transportation and sewer and water and all that stuff. Well.
They have a right to.
The market saying, yeah, this is going to end up being, I mean, yeah. That is consistent with the context of the discussions I was in in twenty sixteen.
Yep, that's right. So the understanding that I have from the commissioners at the time, as well as commissioners now, is there is a very strong, uh, aversion to downzoning. Uh, they're probably less, a little bit less aversion to downzoning Ogden City, just cause it's a, uh, a city. Uh, but very strong aversion to downzoning, uh, private property. And so how do we, how do we do this and create a? How do we create a program that encourages people without forcing, that preserves property rights, but doesn't lead to their execution? Uh, at least in the areas where they're splayed out on the valley floor. Um, there's another camp, it was a, it was a minor, uh, camp when we were doing the general plan, but the other camp is one unit for three acres. It's great. That is great. Now, there are communities and I've got images and I showed images during that general plan process that said, this is a three acre community. You're not gonna see a difference between the three acre community from the street driving around, maybe from up on a hill, but from the street driver on your, I see the difference between a three acre community and a one acre community. Why? Cause the frontage is the exact same and our three of the lines, not one acre lots, it's a hundred fifty feet. So the spacing of the houses, if somebody maximizes the amount of lots they could get in there, it's gonna be the exact same. You don't see their backyards, it's private, offensive. Now, from up on the hillside, you might see a little bit more green space, interwoven in, in between, but, uh, the way water is going, maybe not so green. And is it really open if it's somebody's backyard? I don't know how to answer that question, other than I, I would think if big open pasture is what the plan says, it doesn't say two acres of someone's backyard is an open space. So just maybe projecting my own thoughts on that, I mean, the plan doesn't specify.
But the goal, what we're all trying to accomplish is open space.
Preservation of open space as much as we can.
Yeah, that's the overall goal of all of this stuff.
That's right.
Okay, so with that goal in mind, question I'm saying to ask Charlie, and from your research on the T D R across, what you're trying to do is create bigger open space, right? And what we're trying to avoid, and what I think if we're currently talking about one door, which is fine. But if we do that, you're gonna have you looking at, oh man, I could just develop mine and just get out of this at three, four hundred thousand, a lot. Or I could transfer X amount of dollars, which is likely less.
Right.
So likely you'll get some people that'll transfer that, that aren't, that's great, they have that right. Um, and then you'll have people in development, so you're almost gonna have this like open, not open cluster, you know, you're kind of, I think it's almost gonna go against, go against what the general plan is asking for, if we just, if we don't structure this, I'm not saying what would you think and what you've read. I don't, unless somebody, I don't see a one for one makes, I'm not saying that's what needs to be, but what else have you read that would incentivize people to create a bigger open space and put them in these village areas?
There, there, there are a few things and, and I wanna answer your question, but take it, just a, a half second aside. Figuring out how it's supposed to be organized, uh, how the property is supposed to be organized, we're not gonna find, or, or the valley is supposed to be organized, we're not gonna find best practices on that. Cause this is the valley, it's a unique valley, we're building best practices on how to develop this valley, right? Now, we can find analogs, we find other communities that are similar, uh, but a lot of communities that are at this point, I look at Morgan Valley right across the way, I, I used to work over there. And they've got a great open space plan, valley floor, twenty units, or sorry, twenty acres, one unit for twenty acres. Uh, once you hit the bench, a hundred and sixty acres per unit. Once you get a little higher, three hundred and twenty acres per unit, that's their open space plan. And they don't call it open space, they just say, you have to have a ton of land to build up in the mountains, it's cost prohibitive. Uh, someone who's got a lot of money, who builds a very nice cabin and can afford to build, uh, like, uh, 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 a road going all the way up the mountainside, like you see out in East Sunsville, can do it, but very few others will, and so you don't see a lot of that development happen. Uh, Morgan, you know, they make some changes here and there, so there is some density filling in, they've got a new ski resort coming in, and so it's not one unit for a hundred and sixty acres where there are new ski resorts coming in, but it used to be. Um, and I was working with those guys when I was over there, trying to figure out how many units they actually have with one unit per, they just wanted to do a cluster subdivision and put sixteen units with, with several thousand acres surrounding it. Anyway, um, so we are kind of, we're, we're writing, uh, the book when it comes to this valley, cause we're in a unique situation. Nowhere else, you won't find anywhere else that has been laid out the way that it has already with the rules already in place of one unit, three acre valley wide. Or worse, if you look at some of the more dense subdivisions, dense, uh, subdivisions in the valley, uh, one, uh, one unit to the acre, instead of one to three acres. So at some point in time, the county commission said, we're gonna adopt zoning, cause we think it creates a predictable future, it's something that people can rely on and it helps stabilize property values. And we're gonna be fair to everyone by giving everybody one acre zoning. And so you wanna divide off an acre for your kids, great, do it. At that time, it was mostly farming, so it wasn't, most people weren't thinking it was gonna be wall-to-wall one acre. As we approached wall-to-wall one acre in a few subdivisions, it became clear that septic systems could not function in the valley, given the geology. Uh, one unit to the acre, and so using that science, they used their legislative authority, the county commissioners use the legislative, like, authority to downzone to one unit, but three acres, hoping that that spread the density or the.
When was that exactly?
Nineteen ninety-eight.
Okay.
So that's why we're in a unique, unique situation, we're not gonna find, uh, best practices for, what, well, we're not gonna find a, an analog that's gonna inform us how to do this, but as far as best practices go, answer your question. We have to find a way to offset the development costs. If we are asking for a one-to-one transfer, you are not gonna get your infrastructure installed on a one-to-one transfer, you're probably not gonna get a transfer. I mean, I just, I don't know how to make that work, but if we're asking people to, in a village area, to build a one hundred and twenty foot wide, uh, street cross-section with trees, with, uh, night sky, uh, lamp, uh, lamps, with street furniture.
Infrastructure.
With, with infrastructure, water, sewer, uh, secondary, um, gas and power.
Or wailing.
Yeah, I'll put that one on the back burner for a half second, but yes, that's.
There's somewhere I have to solve for going on.
Yeah, that's part of it. Um, you're not gonna get it on a one-to-one transfer unless you've got, so the, the margin, ten percent is a tough, ten percent return investment for a developer is a tough and risky environment for a developer to work in. Most developers won't touch it. For a little while during the pandemic, or not pandemic, during the, um, the, the recession, some developers would dip below ten percent, but that was just few and far between and we all saw that. We saw everything kind of come to a screeching halt until the market come back up. Um, today, developers, uh, are looking for twenty percent or more. And so how do we help a developer realize a twenty percent return? Okay, and take a step back, cause I can, I can, I can hear the, the criticisms in my mind already. Why are we trying to make developers money? Why are we trying to do that? Because if there isn't the economy for the developer to build where we want building to go, that automatically equals, there is that relationship, it automatically equals not pulling density rights off of the hills or the valley floor or wherever it is we choose to put it. If they're not building here, they're not transferring. So we need to find a way to incentivize, encourage them to build here so that they will transfer. Okay, so how do we do that? Um, uh, the historic way of, of doing stuff like that is actually, um, uh, redevelopment agencies where they went into blighted areas and bought those areas, sold it to a developer and they were able to flip it. And the difference in tax, uh, so taxable value with it being blighted was way down here, taxable value after they built their, um, ultra, uh, uh, fancy mall, you know, it was way up here. And that difference in value went towards paying them back for installing that infrastructure for a period of time. This, the state has done away with RDAs and now they're called, um, C R As, Community Reinvestment Areas. Um, but we've also got other tools, we've got community investment areas and, uh, new on the books this year is a P I D, Public Improvement District. All of them use the same, um, logic. You create value by essentially, I'm gonna use the word upzone, don't hang me for that, by essentially upzoning this area, putting more value in there and taxing it higher. And so you're creating value to the, the community that way. Realizing that the value created to that developer and the return investment is, is less, we might see value in the taxable value of that, right? But every single one of their units, they've got a factor in the cost of transfer and development rights. And, uh, if we use, for example, a P I D is actually an extra tax applied, so now there's an extra tax. And now I'm here in Old Town and I'm selling a condo unit with an extra one percent tax applied to it. And this guy's over here selling a condo unit without it. Uh, who, who's the consumer gonna go to if it's, you know, equal, uh, in terms of square footage and, and, uh, compared to a lot of it, you know, and so you're putting the guy that's in this area disadvantaged with every layer of taxes you add to it. Uh, special assessment area is. Uh, special assessment area is another one that's used. Special improvement district is another one that is used. Um, special assessment area is essentially, it is just a tax that is levied to the uh to that particular area and that extra money that comes in goes towards building something in that area. Special improvement district is actually the creation, the formation of a governmental entity, a district. Um, and that district is responsible for the improvements. I think Wolf Creek is Special Improvement District. No, they might be a special service district. There is a difference. But so there are ways to do this, and I do think that we're gonna have to get into that game. PIDs right now are the fancy way of going about it because there is very, very little risk. The county creates the PID, and after that, the PID is its own thing. It's not tied to county finances in any way. And the development succeeds or fails, um, because it is as risky as it is. Uh, it's, it's a leverage against junk bonds, but people invested that, so. At some point in time, we'll figure out, we're we're getting, working on two of them right now, almost three of them right now, and we'll figure out whether or not the uh bonding is actually gonna be sustainable in terms of uh interest rates. Sorry, guys, it's
So there is some benefit. It comes from a small landowner selling off development rights. I mean, if he's got nine acres and he puts one house in nine acres, that means six acres open. But there, there's some value in that. How, how big is Liberty Park or Eden Park?
Ten?
Any idea?
Ten acres, I'm gonna say. I can look that up, but
Pretty soon, you can get some significant open space.
Yeah.
That will reduce, um. What's the thing we don't care about? We shouldn't be caring about density. We have to be caring about impact.
Impacts.
And that reduces visual impact and development. If you can get even small chunks. Now, in the West County, they use incentives out there for clustering, don't they?
Uh, they did.
They did.
Well, I think it's still gonna be there. It's just gonna take a form. But yeah, it's still, I think, I think it'll still be there. Plus, their new general plan suggests a TDR program that transfers that probably a one to three ratio. So they're probably gonna see a lot of success in TDRs. I'm writing the ordinance so it can work on either side. It'll just make, make adjustments and say, and Ague Valley works this way and we were, we're set.
It sounded like if you can make it worthwhile to the small landlord to sell something you could otherwise turn into houses. It's gotta be more than a couple of thousand dollars. But then worth it to the village where these things are gonna go into small condos or apartments or something, but that's the, that's the trick.
Yes.
The problem with TDRs working right now is that guy that has nine acres, he's sitting on the pot of gold right now. If he was to subdivide and get two more lots.
Yeah.
I mean, he's
No way he's gonna say, hey, uh, you are an ADU. Yeah, uh, give me ten thousand dollars and I'll give up.
Yeah, that's, that's the reality right now.
That's reality. I mean, as much as we'd like to believe otherwise, that's reality. So.
And the market's gonna drive the value of the TDRs regardless. I mean, if we have a down market, but it's an up market for multi-units, maybe it's worth somebody to sell for fifty thousand for a TDR transfer for twenty or ten or whatever. Because he can't sell his property right now anyways.
But it would be a force, kind of like, I need the cash.
Exactly.
Or somebody that just wants to keep it open space anyways, and they weren't ever gonna develop it.
So it seems, it seems like a a combination of tools, lots of tools in the toolbox. Not saying on the map, you're a sender and you're a receiver. That's the only thing you can do. That's possible. And that's what you've been looking at.
Yeah, well, that's the extreme side, yeah.
If, if there's some voluntary aspect in there, yeah, you can go with this program or you could go with this program. You, you can take your nine acres and go and house something. And that's a benefit. Small, but it's a benefit to develop. The other thing, I, I, when you talk about villages, I keep picturing Europe. Picture the little village where the farmers live and they go out and work in the fields. And I think you could probably put a bunch of those in our valley because our valley is twenty miles long. Ten miles wider, whatever.
Yeah.
So it's uh, there, there's really to do lots of stuff here to have a lot of the programs. But, yeah, I don't, I don't know how you get this program to work.
Yeah.
For both sides, the, the guy that's building the condos or the ADU person.
Yep.
Yeah, how does it work for him? He can't go pay a lot price to have his ADU, yeah. And that's a shame for him if he wants to have his mother-in-law.
Yeah, uh, on the, on the economic side, um, what are we need sorry, I heard an echo. I want to um take a step back really quick and and look at the uh finances. When the farmer looks at the value of of selling that, I mean, it may be a three hundred thousand dollars for three acres maybe. But really, the value to develop that, the, the, the value to the farmer to develop that isn't three hundred thousand dollars because they've got to build infrastructure and they've gotta, you know, put stuff in. So uh, really, if we're looking at a twenty percent return on on a reasonable development, that is the value that we should be considering these transfers at.
May, maybe I recall, oh, I can't remember how long ago, the owner of Wolf Creek came to me. I was in the gym committee. I've got property right along the highway between Huntsville and me.
Less infrastructure, less cost.
And he said to me, I don't want you doing anything with your property because you're, my customers drive by your, what you haven't built on yet, and they come and buy from me. So I'm gonna do everything I can to make sure you can't build on your property.
And he got his checkbook and wrote you a ten million, million dollar check.
No, no.
That would have been the right thing.
But some, some view space is more important than others, and it may be right along that. Where a lot can enjoy it, and it doesn't have to be that big.
Right.
As compared to something that's on the boonies or whatever.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's what the plan says. Plan says, create uh a environment which where you can move it from areas where we should be looking at long-term preservation, not a brand-new subdivision going in and put it into an area where you already have the infrastructure to serve it. That is along existing roadways. Guess what else is along existing roadways? Everybody else's house. And so that necessitates it being next to somebody's house. And so here we are.
See, and then
Creating lines on a map.
Putting some clusters along that highway. Where the infrastructure is there already, that makes a lot of sense too.
Yeah.
Just economies of using land. So.
But
People are creative. If we can put something together that they can use voluntarily, that makes sense economically.
Yeah.
Like a lot of people will take advantage of that.
Yeah.
Come up with us, uh, us sitting here saying, oh, you have to do this and you have to do this. It'll happen. Ogden City will do their thing voluntarily.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, so that is our task, is to figure out how to do this in a way that provides optimal incentives to uh, I wrote a book one time, uh, the title of the book is called Nudge. Uh, and basically the author of the book says, this is choice architect, architecture. How do we help uh, create a, an array of choices that will lead to a best community outcome as well? So everybody's, everybody was the private property owner, the community. And that's where we're here, trying to figure out how to do this now. The plan talks about, well, let me think about this a little bit differently. The areas that we designate, we being the uh, the, the planning commission, the county commission, the community through the public hearings, there we designate as areas um valuable to preserve as open space. Uh, if you own in that area, um, and you think about possibility of developing that, um, you've got the hard infrastructure, you've got the hard costs that you have to install to make it usable. So let's talk about, uh, just pick on John for a second, since that's, that's a fun thing to do, uh, Cobe Ranch. Um, and uh, that area on the open space map in the, the general plan is shown as valuable for open space. Um, as soon as John puts a road right down the middle of that, is it valuable as open space? And if it's not, wouldn't it be valuable for a little bit more density then? So I'm not asking that because I think that John's project should be approved or that density should be approved. I'm suggesting that as areas are going to development by choice, because they're just a natural progression from where existing infrastructure is built into where infrastructure isn't. Is that the right place for new develop or for TDRs to go? We want to create a track where that's encouraged, or do we want to create a track where, no, corn-based village is the only place where we want it to be? We're gonna look at these area, areas. We're gonna create these areas that, that the transfers can go. And if you're gonna do a transfer, you're either gonna build it in its place, where it is on the parcel of where it's assigned, or you're gonna transfer it to the boat. Um, that's a reasonable place to go as well. Um, and then there's somewhere in between. Maybe it's go ahead and build where you are, or go ahead and send where, where you want. Uh, that's not an unreasonable place to be either. There's just a degree of uh predictability, uh, highly predictable. If you say you can't develop there, but you can transfer. So you can't realize your development potential, which means you're probably not gonna realize the maximum economic output of your property. But you can realize a little bit of economic output by selling it. And you can only develop over here. Uh, highly predictable. Can provide a lot of stability, both in terms of land values and in uh running comparables on what a TDR costs. Incredibly regulatory, very rigid. Might as well just do downzone upzone. Peter, you don't get anything. Paul, you get a lot. Um, or find somewhere in between those factors. So I'm gonna go back to the three options that I've just, I've been contemplating, and I don't want anyone who's hearing my voice to think that these are locked in. Um, but these are three options I'm contemplating, uh, providing to the uh commissioners. Through you guys first. Number one, we'll create the map and we'll define the areas that are valuable as um open space areas. And we'll call it ascending area. We'll have areas that are valuable as receiving areas, and we'll call it a receiving area or for development, excuse me. And then we'll have kind of the in-between, the, you know, the corridors where the streets already are, the infrastructure that's already there. And maybe that's kind of the free throw, the send, sell, do what you're gonna do. The general plan does say something that I think I can't avoid making a recommendation on. It says that if we designate areas as valuable as open space, then we should only allow development to occur in those areas if it's a cluster subdivision. Where they're actually setting aside in the eighty-three zone, I think it's, I can't remember, sixty percent or eighty percent, they're setting aside more than half of their property for open space and bunching their lots up into small, tight little spaces in the corner. Um, so you're creating large trans of open space that way, as long as we're looking at a big enough piece of property. Interrupted with little pock marks of subdivisions. Not a bad way to go either. So option number one um is you can only send if you're in a sending area, you can only receive if you're in a receiving area. Um, and you can't develop if you're in a sending area.
How is that a downzoning and upzoning?
Uh, this is the most extreme side of the options.
Right, but you're saying options, but you also said that our current commissioners have zero interest in doing this. So is it really an option?
Well, uh, looking at um all alternatives, I think is important, regardless of whether or not it's a reasonable alternative, given our political. Um, so that's one side, uh, and then the middle side is if you're in a sending area, you can develop fifty percent of your development rights. The other, the rest of it, you have to sell, or if you want to use it, you have to send. Um, and that fifty percent needs to be clustered. And then option three, which I think is the most likely option, uh, the commissioners will adopt is if you're in a sending area, go ahead and send or develop. Go ahead, make three acre lots or clusters. Um, if you're in a receiving area, go ahead and receive. Um, or don't. Just less probability in that, but you, we will find areas where we are preserving more open spaces in creating the option, because we do know of landowners who would like to see their property remain open, but would also like to get a little bit of payback. They want to get a couple of lots for their kids, but okay with the rest of those property rights going to the village court. So we'll see that voluntarily happen. Uh, if we create this program. So, so that makes sense, is that, I mean, those three I'm not locked into. We can certainly go in any direction, and the conversation we have will take us in a lot of different directions. But uh, that's where I Sorry?
I worry about number two being the taking. So is number one.
Yeah, well, so taking has a very specific definition under jurisprudence. Um, so if it's a legal take, so politically, it's a take, that absolutely. Uh, legally, uh, unless you are devaluing, devaluing, like completely wiping out the value of the property. Um, and that's been determined through the street board on several of the cases.
Yeah, I mean, zoning generally is, it's very, as long as they have some, excuse me, some kind of economic values.
If we zone you to the O one zone, you could still do it, of course. Uh, of course, they don't make a lot of money, if, but we, you could still do an open space use that could turn a profit. Agriculture, for example. So we haven't devalued your property all the way.
Yeah, and significantly.
That loss, oh, yeah.
There's the bigger worry. Is how, how smart we think we are.
Sure.
There you go.
Yeah.
Because I don't think I know I'm not that smart.
Right? We, we move a little bit and realize we were wrong and have to adjust.
I know. Probably if we looked at the valley today and we compared us looking at it maybe thirty years ago.
I agree. And my guess is if we looked at the valley today, seeing the problem that we're having right now with TDRs, when we look over in Morton County and see what's happening over there, they've got a freeway that runs through their valley. There's no reason why it shouldn't be developed like created. We would probably make different decisions. And trend tracks, right?
And all that noise.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, there's, there's another thing we think I'll need to picture, like you say. Picture houses out there on this open space. Well, how big can a village get that for it's a city? If we're talking about moving eight thousand dwelling units. That's, now we're talking about small city. They better be spread out so they're villages and not a huge city. Unless you want to see.
That's, if we were highly effective and somehow find a way to encourage everyone to move their development rights into one location, a city. Everywhere else stayed open. Is that a, is that a good alter, alternative? Having a city with a growth boundary in the valley and everywhere else is open? I've seen that.
So I don't think so, because Okay, there's another story. Rotary Club, Snow Basin is trying to do its trade to get more land at the base. So basis, so they came into our Rotary Club and gave a presentation of what they're trying to do. And then there was a group that came in and, and objected and said, no, you can't do that. If you're gonna trade and get this land, you've gotta have wildlife habitat here. You've gotta have parks. You've gotta have all this other stuff. I said, my goodness, just go up there on Trapper's Highway and look around. What do you see? Thousands of square miles of wildlife habitat. Why does the base site have, have Snow Basin have to set aside land for a zoo? It doesn't make sense. We're surrounded by so much open space right now. Doesn't it benefit us more to have little open spaces rather than the city with, and then surrounded by what we're already surrounded by? Rather than the city with and then surrounded by what we're already surrounded by.
That's where you want that.
If we can have a little European villages.
Yeah, little hamlets.
The little ham something. And so that as you are in your home. You perceive there is some open space right around you. It's not. Hundreds of acres. It's what you look at, what you experience. You don't feel crowded.
Yeah.
You feel like you've got a really nice life. Environment because you're not crunched like you would in the city.
Yeah. I I like that perspective, and I think you're spot on with what the plan is asking for. So I keep on telling you guys that the plan is asking for the opposite of what you need to prepare acres. That I mean, if that's the outcome, let's throw the final way if we're okay with one unit per acres. But certainly not asking for, you know, twenty uh units maker everywhere, right? There's there's somewhere in between that helps preserve the pastoral lifestyle. Without spreading, you know, three acre lots. So three acre lots destroys the pastoral lifestyle, creating a city. Surrounded with a lot of pastoral lifestyle. That only that only benefits the guys at the end of the edges of the city, right?
Exactly. Charlie, I'm not sure. Listening to your three options, I agree one and two. As a land, you know, landowners, I just don't see how it makes sense. And three, I don't know how to achieve what the general plan wants. I just don't see the incentive to move the density to the no.
Specifically incentive, you know.
Okay, I just don't know. I, yeah, and. I could just totally wrong. I'm just not seeing how you're incentivized like as a landlord. To move water movement, and I'm just not seeing it. I'm not saying that it's on developers making money. Right?
Yeah.
Don't worry about the developer talking about to actually get the purpose to move those to villages we talked about. I don't, maybe I'm wrong. I've been around lots, but I just don't, I don't see that that's gonna work out of the F of same, but just saying, hey, just sell or develop. You know, you guys talked about that earlier. I I don't know that any of those options. Achieve what the general plan wants, and if general plan doesn't want one to three acres, you may get more three acres because people are like.
Uh huh.
Oh, man, I have to do this or this.
Yeah, they they're gonna take the path of least resistance, which is let's just do traditional subdivisions, one to three everywhere, right?
Yep, so that's I just don't know that it's giving you with the general.
Okay, if let's just pretend for a second economics was not a factor. I just just doing a values uh quiz for you. If economics was not a factor, do you think that would uh option three? Would be achieving what the general.
Yeah, if we're all altruistic, I'd be like.
So that's I just wanted to make sure I understood um where you're coming from on that. I do know one thing. If we don't create a program, TDRs won't happen. Period. And so my suggestion is. We start somewhere.
They're happening.
But that's.
They're happening through development groups.
Right?
Alright.
Yep, they are.
Now, I'm thinking of the something happened with the Hinkley Ranch property.
I don't know where that is.
East of. Yeah, conservation, so. Something voluntarily.
Yeah.
Was worked out there.
Yeah.
I think without government pushing this way or that, it just happened because people involved wanted to make it happen.
Yeah, I think they did the same thing that Bill liked it um and just it's a nice write off.
But that takes density, be able to move, which is great. It's fine if you want to do that, so right, but it takes that density. Away from being able to move the villages, but that would solve the general plan.
We have a double edged sword and you've landed right on it. You need to have economically viable villages. To encourage developers to see the benefit, right, with the financial benefit of going to buy units movement. But if you don't, if you continue to create a scarcity in units by retiring them, the cost of them go up. Now, I'm not saying that we shouldn't be retiring because the general plan is very clear that retirement is on the list of things that we should be encouraging. But it is a double edged sword.
Well, voluntary re- or retirement, which is voluntary.
Right.
Man, anybody can do it. I can do it. Everybody owns anything I'm doing. Can do it.
Yeah. Uh it well, you have to have some amount of leverage, but yeah.
Yeah.
You do.
But and I think it's worth. Voicing that more and more because the the contingent of the valley that's. Very vocal about not wanting development. It's worth saying. Retire development, I mean, like. Put your money where your mouth is. If you don't want development, you all have the certain ability. Feel free to donate it to the land trust like some other people have done. Um otherwise, if you're not willing to do that.
I've got a friend of mine who lives up in the uh Wolf Creek area and they bought the lot next door. To develop a lot. They haven't done anything with it. They don't want to do anything with it. They just don't want anyone to build on it because that's their view space. So they did the 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 conservative thing and they put their money where their mouth is and they bought that development, right? But they're not gonna retire that development, right? It would be foolish to do that because when they pass on or when they sell, it's work to develop their properties or to develop rights. Uh and so how do we help those guys realize the economic benefit if we can uh of doing that return?
The other, the other benefit of. Having a voluntary thing. If if you want to do this, if you want to be a sender, great. If you want to be a receiver, great. You decide. And letting the market operate to decide where density is going to end up. Will help eliminate the threat of a huge city developing.
I understand.
In other words. If somebody in Northport somewhere, somebody somewhere else in the valley, you've got huge valleys. I wanna, I wanna kind of have a village over here. I wanna come up with the. Seaside, the lakeside resort.
Mm hmm.
In city. Okay, that's going to be a village there. A village will pop up here because somebody. Wanted to make it happen and he owns it. Okay, well, Disney decided he wants to do it here, you know. Government didn't say, no, it's gonna be here. It's gonna be here.
So I'm hearing an option four.
But in the general plan, we do do that, right? We have seven spots.
We have seven spots.
But the idea was, we're not gonna be there anyway. We'll probably have more. Some that are identified may disappear like Olson Basin Road. Others may pop up.
Okay, that part I wasn't.
Yeah.
Thinking, I was thinking. Concentrating on.
We're gonna encourage. Areas of open space, small and. Only large. But then this density is gonna be transferred somewhere where it is more dense.
Yeah.
It could be. And I think Wolf Creek was identified because it's already there.
Mm hmm.
And Nordic was kind of identified because here's a ski resort. They're probably gonna do something someday. And Snow Basin and Huntsville area.
Mm hmm.
Okay, just because it's already there.
Right.
But who knows where it's gonna pop up in the future.
Right.
Nordic wasn't there until somebody decided to put in a little ski resort.
That's true.
Okay, and who knows what will happen tomorrow.
And I uh what you're saying runs in line with some conversations I've had with other landowners who. Large landowners who would very much like to. Join in on the TDR program. They're more than happy to go buy units to transfer into uh the higher density uh community that they want to. Uh it's just on an area that hasn't been matched for it, so it isn't something that's been anticipated. So today, if they ask for it.
See, that's an example of the market could say, okay, now we need to identify or designate this as a village area. It looks like it can happen.
Yeah, yeah. Um and so if they came and asked, um it would be an automatic recommendation for denial from planning staff. If they came and asked to amend the general plan to create a village in those locations, then we would have a much more broad discussion about.
Does not the general plan anticipate that there will be others?
It does.
I didn't I didn't read it that way.
Certainly, the discussion.
It I do recall that, yep. Um but at the end of the day, it was limited to those.
Yeah.
And then even then, we're beginning to peel back uh on one of those intersections already, right? Uh on the ultimate basis.
See, that's an example. We're trying to, we're trying to look into the future and be accurate and we weren't over there.
Yep.
It it now doesn't make any sense. So things like that ought to be amended.
Yeah, I well, I agree. Being fluid and making sure we're fluid and being responsive to market demand, community desire. Market desires, or excuse me, landowner desire, I think it's important to the full dialogue, yes.
Yeah, there's another thing that I'm aware of. Uh. I don't know the gentleman's name that filled up on top of uh the mountain.
Um rock rocking or ranch or whatever.
She goes directly to the monastery.
Used to be the biggest one in the in the county and now the one that's going on next to the lake is the biggest one I got. Oh, sorry, those few.
Alright, so I was in a. And his caretaker was there and there was talk about, let's make it so he can't build anything on this property. My caretaker said. You guys are nuts. But what do you mean? We don't want things built there. He said, yeah, you're going. About it exactly opposite because you're gonna make it so he can't build anything on this property. What's the property worth? Zero kind of, you're really devaluing that property. His idea is have a very expensive property that's worth a lot of money. So if you can donate it into a conservation easement, get a big tax right on it. You accomplished your open space because now it's preserved.
Yeah.
But you're making it impossible for him. To do that.
Yeah.
And so, whoa. Lot of unintended consequences. You've got to think things through.
Yeah. Um I had a conversation with one uh person who's interested in helping create a TDR market. Um and this person thinks that they can collect a pretty big bucket of TDRs that might be available for sale at at some point in the future. Um and it was a really unique idea where maybe what we do is we have people. Purchase those TDRs from that bucket or from wherever else they can purchase them from, transfer them to their property. And then work with the IRS to put a conservation easement on the property now that they've actually got a lot of development potential out of that property. Um interesting and unique idea on how to retire developers.
See that that would be voluntary. That's not the heavy hand of government saying you will do this.
Right.
With all its unintended consequences.
Yeah, so setting up a an ordinance or a program that that helps foster the creation of those. Of that, we at the very least don't want to have an ordinance that says nothing because now we don't know whether or not we can do transfers.
Well. We can now transfer them through a development agreement.
Yeah.
If we had a very general TDR arrangement, you can be a sender, you can be a buyer. Leaves the market open to do what the market would deem best in the future because we cannot predict the future. Okay, it gives the ability for the situation you're talking about to happen.
Mm hmm.
This person's decided I want to accumulate them and then I'll donate them, whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, but the market can figure out what's gonna work best. The end result. Development rights are retired. There's more open space and we accomplished it without saying. You're not gonna do anything on your property. You have to receive.
Right. So that's a reasonable way to go. I I think it's a valuable way to go. I've got it here as option four um that we can alternative for that we can uh work on. Um I'll uh flesh out these alternatives um because I'm I am writing the text and the text. From what I can see right now is not complicated or cumbersome. Um it might be a page long, maybe two or three pages once I actually get writing in detail, but um.
I wouldn't see it to make a lot of sense. So everyone sends, I wrote and received for now. I need to allow the market to go. But I don't see how that gets to the back to the village just right now, right to meet the general plan, but that would allow it to.
So so um I I suspect if it is just everyone receive and just everyone send. And you know, it it can go wherever. It will go where the market tells it to go and um right now without sewer and water. Uh it's it's not gonna be a village just.
Well, that's the mark. That's the mark.
But right, right.
Because not only do you have this TDR program, you've got, you've got to have water. You've got to have sewer. You've got to have roads.
Right.
And then have the result, right? If it doesn't fit the general plan.
Not necessarily. That's the other thing. This is a. Like putting a transparent transparent transparency film uh over the valley where it. If you're doing TDRs. TDRs is a glorified up some down some. It's just you're making people pay each other to do it, to make try and make somebody else whole, right? It's just a glorified. I'm surprised the state legislature even decided to put any limits or regulations on it. Because somebody could do, we could just call it a rezon and put in our code that in order to get this rezon, you gotta go pay the farmer. We could do that, but we're not doing that. We're. Coloring the map to say this is a big agricultural area, AV three. But if you wanna tightly pack some units over here in this cluster subdivision, uh you can't.
So I'm gonna clarify, it's AV three. Someone goes and buys fifty development rights on AV three.
Stays AV three.
It's still AV three, so there's three to every, you know, they got all those units. It's not really possible to build without a rezon or something.
Sorry, the.
Say this again.
The transfer would allow them to build those despite what the zone says they could do.
Wait, say that again, because I feel like that goes into this CW thing.
So if we created a TDR overlay zone.
Mm hmm.
The overlay zone, it governs anywhere where the overlay zone conflicts with the underlying zone, the overlay zone governs. There are some complications that will come out of that unintended consequences.
Yeah, I don't know.
Because if you're doing, if in an agricultural area where you've got a zone set up for agricultural uses and you're putting nine thousand square foot lots in there. It could get a little sketch. So maybe we do need to consider the need for a reason when it happens, but. The point that I wanted to make is the. The cumbersome nature of doing a transfer is needs to be built into that um motivation package, right? How do we motivate people to do something? Well, it can't be through huge hoops of cumbersome uh program. Not to say that's a bad idea. Uh the plan, it it kind of anticipates that on a case by case basis, like development agreements. Will determine with the community and with public hearings whether or not that should be open space or whether or not that should be developable property. The program that I am suggesting that we create. Let's draw it. If we get the lines wrong, let's come back and let's amend it. Frequently, because we will still want a case, but draw it at first so that somebody can see I'm in green. I want to send it here. And we're creating that program and it can happen. It's not forcing, it's just allowing. And then when somebody says, whoa, I'm not in green anymore. I'm in a different color and I can't send, I'm gonna go ask. And we do that case by case analysis there. You're giving a lot more people. The right to send right away. And then doing case by case on a lot less land.
Charlie, let's go back to this four and this example you gave. Okay, we've got agricultural land.
Yeah.
Okay. Unless I'm mistaken. There's not a lot of agriculture going on in the valley.
Western Weaver just just pulled that bandaid off and said, no, this is residential.
This is commercial agricultural.
I mean, it is in the valley. There are not a lot of farmers up here making a living. Raising crops.
It's a hobby.
It's a hobby.
Where they're feeding their own land.
Okay, so let's say. Your example. Somebody accumulates fifty development rights voluntarily because we're doing four. Anybody can send, anybody can receive. I've got fifty of them now. And he's got so many acres. Okay, he's gonna do this on an AV three.
Mm hmm.
Is that a bad thing? Well, we're destroying valuable farm. Well, land is not valuable in the valley because it can be farmed. It's valuable because it's.
It can be developed. Well, I I think it's valuable because it can be developed.
Okay, now, okay, well, we've got this fifty units on this little piece of AV three. But what did we accomplish by that? We've got fifty units that aren't gonna be developed over here on AV three somewhere. So we created permanent open space here.
Yes.
And we clustered our little deal right here, just like intended by the general plan.
Yeah.
So that that could be a very good deal.
Mm hmm.
And if we start saying you can only send, you can only receive, we kill that.
Yeah.
Creativity.
Would you think that it would be? I mean, explain to me why it will, if it was already in a village area, why you would take it out?
Why you would take it out?
Like why would you send from a villager, right?
Yeah.
Maybe your village area is getting too big and you don't like it. You got a lot of problems there and you don't want. I don't know.
If it's designed to get into a village and somebody sit on one.
But how big a village?
The ones we have established, you know, these circles that we have, these seven.
Yeah, but how dense can they be?
Well, they can only be as dense as the, uh. Density rights will allow, so maybe you, maybe you put a number to each one. Maybe you say, this one can hold two thousand. This one can hold five thousand, I don't know, just an example, based on what the density kind of.
And I like to send and receive them to everybody, but once they get in there.
I, I just look at the, the math. If we've got one third of these rights are being used. Probably more of them in or, or in a village area. But we've got two thirds, we gotta stick in the same village area. Whoa. That's not a village, that's a city.
Talking about one to two thousand per village.
And that's one's bigger than another.
Nordic's probably one of the smaller ones, right?
If you look at the street regulating plan that we just adopted, it's actually one of the bigger ones, Nordic is. Well, and it, that doesn't mean that the density. Is, is gonna be city density, because you know, it's dense in the middle and it feathers out to one acre. This is a good spot to jump off into that, it feathers out to one acre on the fringes, so that those fringes are still a receiving area. It's just one of the acres, they're wanting to three acres, right, and then right outside of that purple polygon that's on your maps over there in Nordic area. Then it's just one to three or higher, and so that's. You know, neither sending nor receiving.
Yes, to your point on the small open spaces, that would create that if somebody sent them out inside the village area, they would have a small. Open space.
I just, I look at my. Kitchen window. Okay. The densest area in the valley is out in the kitchen. But I can't see, I don't notice. Because I've got some. I got some alfalfa fields between me and Huntsville. And so the impact of Huntsville on me is not great. Which is. Now, I don't know if my view would be that much more enhanced if Huntsville weren't there. But that's, that's the picture I see in my mind if you look at. Your patio where you spend time, you've got some space around you, you're not being crunched by vinyl fences right next to you pushing along. That's, that's more rural, that's. Beautiful living.
So I see four options and I see maybe a lot of support for option four, and I think that's fantastic, that'll, that'll give us a clear direction. To give the county commission when we're ready to, uh, to give it, we have to give you a couple of, uh, observations that I know the county commissioners have. Had. The county commissioners are struggling with the idea of double dipping, uh, selling a ten acre parcel. For as much value as they're going for, and then turning around and selling the two or three extra development rights that are on that parcel. Uh, into a village center. And it's not because they're not concerned about it necessarily because of. I can't speak for them, I was surprised to hear them. Concerned about that, they would rather say, you know what, it's less likely it's gonna be developed in place. So let's just say, if you wanna develop in place. Uh, get your frontage, get your area developed in place, don't set it down to the, the, uh, valley floor. Now, that was a primary push by one commissioner, the other two commissioners said. We're trying to keep those areas open, so why would we say, why would we create an environment where the path least resistance is developed in place? Still give them the option to move it. Basically, the first commissioner said, no, it, once they've subdivided. That's it. There is no other density potential inside of that subdivision is, is what one of the commissioners said. They have chosen a subdivision. That means that if you've got a ten acre parcel in a subdivision in a three acre zone. That's it, you don't have any development rights, you're wiping them out. Well, there's your retirement program right there, now it's just one commissioner's point of view, and I think that commissioner. We were talking very openly and very hypothetically, and I think if he read it through the political filter, he would probably have a different answer. Uh, the other two commissioners said, you know. We're gonna encourage density to move out of these areas and move into areas where we think it's more appropriate, especially areas that create an economy and scale that we've actually paid for infrastructure. Maybe we leave them open, or we allow that landowner, maybe. Maybe it's. Ladon Lewis, uh, doing a development somewhere and he does the transfer at the time he subdivides. Says, okay, I've got a subdivision, I'm entitled for ten units here. I could get thirty units out of it, I'm not gonna do thirty units, I wanna move those twenty units. And then he subdivides and starts selling the lots, there's a conservation easement on all the properties saying can't redivide, what you have is what you have. And then, uh, the, the rest of those parcels go into, is paying for.
So Charlie, it was that comment that really sparked my interest, but I haven't thought about it, but the double dipping. Again, I was said, I didn't find that that model made sense, actually made more sense to put more density on the ground.
I thought so.
And.
Because you've already built the infrastructure in place.
Yeah, it made way more sense to put the, to create density, so what that encourages more open space, right? And then actually moving those to where the density goes. At least in my mind, but the model did prove that it's double dipping, it actually shows that it would actually hurt the developer pocket to do that.
Is that using Lewis's new?
I don't know if I followed you.
So what I did is I took math and I took all the lots sold that are larger than three acres in the valley. I took an average of that lot. And then I said. And then I did a hypothetical thirty acres, I did the same math, and then I assigned fifty K to each, I put fifty K to each development right, right? It didn't pencil.
It didn't pencil to bank them and move them?
Yeah, it actually was, if you, if you would actually make more money by developing.
I wondered if that'd be the case.
Because of pipes and whatnot?
Yeah, and, and just the cost to be able to sell, you can sell your lots for the spread, dear demand, you can put more density in. I mean, that's been history through time, that's why cities typically do better just because of density, right? People do better building whole family than they do. Single family.
That's why whenever somebody says, you're gonna approve this brand new development next door, it's gonna devalue my property, well, no, it's not, it's gonna devalue your motivation for living there. But it will increase in almost every circumstance.
And property actually go for value. So I, in my model that I ran, that's what I found. I don't follow that train cuz I was interested in that comment, and I was like, man, so I ran my own economic model, I didn't find that. I actually think it follows moving to density, I actually think it encourages someone wants to do less density than, than they're allowed. In my mind, it's a bit altruistic, right, it's a bit saying, oh, my work, yeah, it, it, they still make money, but they don't make as much money as they would have.
Even though they can sell things at a higher price point.
Price per square foot on land, or you're not, you're gonna make more by developing.
What he's, what he's telling, well, he, some unnamed developer is telling us is that. He is selling ten acre parcels for well above what he could sell ten one acre parcels.
That's a supply issue though, and a demand issue right now more than anything. We had more supply. That's, we're in a weird spot, right now is not great.
Wouldn't that stand true, given that we have said cap on development? We're not gonna increase, we're not gonna give anybody extra units or anything like that, I mean, that is a constrained supply.
You only have so many units, you're right.
And so that's why, uh, when, uh, Jeff, when you mentioned, why is it valuable to live up there cuz it's beautiful? I think it's valuable, but valuable to live up there because you've got a very limited amount of supply and it's hard to get more. Um, if you just pulled the bandaid off and allowed ten thousand more units and titled ten thousand more units, I, I think the value of everyone's property is gonna come down significantly. Cuz you flood the market until it fills up and then. And the inverse will be.
Developing up there is difficult as it's water issues and stuff, so all that decreases supply and there's an impending of demand, right?
Those are artificial constraints we can put on them. If there are a chance we are, are having reasonably priced land. And reasonable real estate taxes.
Well, you have the highest.
A look and feel of the valley, that's the point of this general plan is so that.
And that's what, that's what a lot of folks told us when we were having the economics conversation, we're willing to pay more.
Right, as I say, I don't mind paying more in my taxes because I live in a beautiful place, but, um. And, and I get that not everybody, um, might feel that way, but. But the point of the general plan was, we know we're gonna grow, let's grow consciously, let's decide to do this in a way that preserves things. Uh, I do, I mean, I agree, I think letting people send or receive in less. Constraint on them is a good, is, is good for people, um, but this idea that they can pop up and. In reading the general plan, it doesn't talk about letting other villages just pop up as the market might. Provide for or, you know, incentivize in some way, but, um. And I thought that was, that was the point, was that that way you've got seven villages. And that's where the density goes and everything else stays this beautiful. Idyllic valley, if we start saying, well, we'll let fifty homes go right there and then, you know, we want a little waterfront. Um, fun thing and like in Tahoe, and so we're gonna put like, you know, a hundred right here, you start breaking down this. Idyllic. Valley.
They're coming from measles into.
For the seven, I get, but if all of a sudden it's now. Midsize, it's not, it's a bit chicken pox.
Well, I think, I think you got, if, if you were as successful, if we're as successful as you're mentioning, tumor, and then you got what you're mentioning boil versus measles, right? And so there's, there's just a. It's just, it's just a scale.
And decide not to do anything and puts two hundred units, they just made a village.
Right.
Right, exactly.
Not on the general plan, so.
Right.
It's gonna happen.
And that's why I'm bringing this to. Predictability, one of the reasons why we plan is to provide predictable. They could build one right now, yes, they've gotta build sewer, but they could build twenty use the acre right there. Fortunately, it's the city, so we've got a level of protection, but they would like us to help them get their money back.
But they could take their five hundred. Move them up, if there was a TDR ordinance, right?
Move them where?
Doesn't harm them, you said Ogden City, not Ogden City, right, it's like you take them from over here.
Uh, and, and the string town road is in the valley, so they can move it from.
They can move them here.
But they can move it.
To one of the seven villages.
Well, if that's a limitation, or if it's send and receive.
They can move it over.
Anybody can come and add, come to Ogden City and say, hey, uh, I want, well, we've got people talking to them right now about putting accessory dwellings in the backyard, but. Hey, I wanna do a little subdivision, uh, you know, one acre, um, I need some units. Ogden City's willing to sell them for pretty cheap. Uh, I think compared to what others would find a value in. So yeah, you'll, you'll see that move to. Locations that we didn't previously plan, that's more, that's more market based, that's more. Or, organic, uh, growth, that's true. Um, and yeah, there's no, no wrong way to skin the cat, it's just a question of what the future looks like.
Unless you wanna compare it to the general, right?
Then there's a wrong way.
That's, that would be my point.
Cuz then you could actually say, yeah, you can move based on a bit of, if it complies with the general plan, I know that's more restrictive. But if that's what.
The plan and the general.
So the plan says that commercial villages should be the primary receiving area.
Commercial villages.
Yeah, it doesn't say the only receiving area. I do think it anticipated that receiving could be in other places, but it doesn't say where, it does say. That we should, and I, this is where I think the plan is fundamentally flawed because no one's gonna do this, we should on a. Parcel by parcel basis as somebody asks, evaluate whether or not that is reasonable open space or reasonable for development. And if somebody comes with property right next to a roadway that maybe is reasonable for development and says, I'd like to send all my units. Then it's up to you guys. To determine whether or not that. They should, should we allow them to send all their units, should we allow them to send some of their units, this is right next to the road, this is a great spot for units to stay. Why would we let them sell, and then there's a public hearing. Well, yeah, and on every single parcel. You've gotta have this conversation. And a public hearing, and the not in my backyard that we saw in Nordic, what we're seeing in Wolfbridge is going to be the conversation. And at the end of the day, the big picture, moving units into areas where we're. Hopefully predetermined to provide an economy and scale there. Falls, it, it fails, it's not gonna happen.
No, the predetermined is the problem. If the market determines, the market takes into account infrastructure.
Sure. It, so what, what I'm saying is.
Reality and marketability and all those other factors that will help make it successful.
I think that's a, that is a way that this can go. What the plan anticipates, and, and this doesn't disagree with what you're saying, but the plan anticipates is. We're gonna make this decision on a case by case basis, based on the unique qualifications of that parcel.
Problematic.
Yes. Yes, yep. So what we did with the form based village zone, that was just kind of a pilot program and certainly we still haven't seen the success of it yet, we will soon. We're gonna have a, a, a development come in pretty quickly. It creates an administrative right, not. A legislative decision every single time somebody wants to do a TDR. You don't have enough staff to be able to evaluate every single parcel when somebody asks, can I send or can I receive? And if we are governing, uh, based on, governing land uses based on development agreements on every single one, even the small ones. They're gonna get lost, again, you don't have enough staff, that's, that is very costly to administer in time. Uh, and if, if I have to read a development agreement for every parcel and it's different, as I go down the same exact road for every parcel. That's, uh, that's gonna get cocky. Uh, in order to determine whether or not they could build there. And so my suggestion would be to create the baseline. Draw it on a map. We can say sending, receiving, uh, find ways to motivate people to send, find ways to motivate people to receive. But at least have the area where from the beginning, it's a by right, it's an administrative right. They drew it on the map, I'm in a, uh, area, uh, I can either develop my rights right here, or I could send them. By right, I'm sending them.
If you do number four, you don't have to do the map.
Right, so the concern I have with number four is, it is, nobody gets a choice, right?
Everybody gets a choice.
Everybody gets to send.
Everybody, everybody, every individual landowner gets a choice.
Here's the principle. That for me is kind of a guiding principle. Some, said by somebody a lot smarter than I am. Talking about government, you wanna lose taxes, but it keeps moving, they're gonna. If it stops moving subsidizing. In other words. The more we'll get in there with regulations.
It might strangle.
We were gonna strangle this thing, and now we're gonna figure out ways to unstrangle this thing. Because we strangled it. But if people can make, I mean, that's what economic decisions are. If it makes sense to somebody who's gonna risk his money, his gold. To make it work, okay. He's. He's probably a lot smarter than we are because we is, is. We're kinda quasi-government, we volunteer members here. Because. We're not spending our own money, we're spending somebody else's.
That's why I like to tell developers. Let me know how else I can spend your money.
And that increases the chances something is not gonna work.
I agree.
I, I like it, Earl Holden. He risked his own. Fortune. He's creating something that, I don't know if he's making money out there or not. He sure made something beautiful. Seems pretty certain he's gonna keep. Keep making something even more desirable and beautiful. And we, we scares enjoy it. Glad he did it.
The reality is, is we have these natural villages already, right?
They're not gonna change.
Liberty, Nordic, Huntsville. If we, if everybody can send and receive, the majority of the people that kind of live in these villages right now don't really have the opportunity to send cuz they don't own the property. So I don't think you'd be limiting. People by saying, these guys can't send. Cuz they probably can't send anyways.
Well, it's the CW that pops in my mind.
But that was a, that's kind of a unicorn because they had, that was zoned commercially, right?
Well, it's kinda like the Ogden City property, it's zoned for density.
It is, but I think the majority of the people, you know, say somebody's got a big chunk of land over here. They're not gonna buy rights from here anyways to develop this, I don't think, they don't have the infrastructure to do it, these areas will at some point have infrastructure. For these people to send to those areas.
I drove by that snow basin thing to try and figure out what you're talking about. To try and figure out what you're talking about across the street, they could develop a little bit. It's pretty constrained over there.
On the uh corner of Oldtonal Basin Road?
Yeah, where where there's fifty four. Rights at issue. And I think you stated, well, they could put some across the street, but I couldn't see where they could put them across.
If they exist.
Right, right now, the ones across the street do exist, because that's just straight up F R three, twenty units the acre, no development agreement. And that actually happened at the same time, we, I was very surprised to see the county commissioners do what they did, because they gave C W land, F R three had said, but only ten. So not the sixty four that you can otherwise do. Right across the street went to F R three with zero development agreements and zero restrictions, and I'm kind of surprised to see that as soon as they get. Water availability and sewer availability, they've got an acre over there, it's gonna be hard to develop, I agree, it's not great property. But they've they've got something.
Yeah. So as. Time goes on and things happen. It makes sense to have some flex.
Yeah, I agree.
So you can. The market's the guy. The better work economically is not yet.
Yeah, I was, uh I pulled up the Ogden general plan and it does say that. In that it must include how they're going to get water, sewer, power, all the utilities for every right, as to say, if you're gonna put fifty on here. How are you gonna support that, sure? So that means you'd have to still go through their preliminary class, even not through preliminary class, but they have to get. Health and all that, right? Is that what it's saying, Charlie?
Cause that's what. It's 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 not that specific, but it you're not wrong to infer it. When we were talking about.
You know what I mean, like.
Uh when we were talking about the Ogden City property, the five hundred units, um there was a debate with the planning commission. Um about how many units they had, well, they don't have five hundred, they don't have water and sewer, that means they only have twenty six. It's not an unreasonable argument to make, however. If you're gonna make them install, like where do you, what threshold do you go to, or if you're gonna make them install water and sewer just to prove they could build five hundred units? Well, there's no reason for them to move those five hundred units anymore.
It's counter, that's what I'm reading, I'm seeing what you're talking about, what general plan, they they seem countered too, it also seems like general plan itself.
Well, this, this is where I think the plan is flawed, because again, I I agree with Jeff on the extent that. If we create a hard system, no one's gonna ask. Why would they ask if they have to go fight with their neighbors? Who do not want to develop in their backyard. Um I shouldn't say nobody, I shouldn't be so decisive, it's not black and white, but you'll have you, there there will be less who asked, and so you're losing opportunities. To see uh transfers happen. And so. If we want to make it hard, make it hard, I just think we're gonna be writing an ordinance that is not gonna be used as much or as effectively as it can be. And maybe, you know what, maybe this is the two tier. Prioritize moving it into villages, because villages right now, the transfer, uh the code in villages say. Whatever the base density is. And that's just, it's almost gross development acreage divided by however many you can get in the zone, right? Maybe that's the incentive to send to a village area, and then outside the village area, it's, well, we gotta do a very detailed analysis. That detailed analysis cannot happen. On an administrative level, it can't, we would have to do. A hearing, we would have to go through legislative process, because a detailed analysis is gonna flesh out things that are unique to that specific property. That I don't have enough ink to write a code about. Uh that'd make it very clunky, so in that case, we are looking at it on a case by case. Well, you got a stream here, you got wildlife corridor over here, and you've got prime agricultural land over here, um but you got a road right here. You know, and so if we're trying to do, oh, and you, you know, sewer and water, that's gonna cost you ten million bucks, show us your pro forma. Uh okay, we see your performance upside down, so there's no way you're gonna get sewer and water, meaning. You're never gonna realize the development there. You've just missed the opportunity to retire rights off of that parcel. When maybe two years down the road, that sewer does get extended to that property. Well, they could have been gone, but now sewer and water's there, that landowner's got a lot more motivation to build.
So if I'm hearing, what I was hearing in there was. Um a little bit of a two tiered incentive system of. Maybe I was in my own head, but. Anybody can send. Anyone can. Send. Or receive, however. If you send to a village area. You don't need to prove. All this other stuff, because that village already has infrastructure and whatnot, but if you want to send to a. Rural area that doesn't have the infrastructure, then you need to come and prove this, so there's more incentive to get it to the village. But you're still allowed to do whatever you want, because we don't wanna limit you. But we're incentivizing that you said it'll be easier path of least resistance to send it to a village.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I think that needs more. That will be more than.
And the commissioners don't need to downzone anybody, and nobody needs to feel put upon, I still have my choices, but economically, it makes more sense for me to just. Sell it there.
Yeah, you guys ready to have those fights, cause that'll be public hearing.
If you've got your hypothetical person saying. Okay, I'm trying to collect a pot of these things to. Donate him or use him or something, he's got a little bit of uh. Competition going with. Which is gonna make. These development rights more valuable. Which gives people more incentive. To transfer their development. Okay, now, new guy. He didn't, he's out in the rural area, he's not identified as a village. But he. If he gets enough development rights in his pot, and he can show how sewer and water and roads and everything can be there. Chances are, he's gonna become a village. Right, that's okay. And I don't allow that to happen. Now, the other thing. Just on me, if we if we say you can only send, you can't receive, that's saying you can't have an eighty year.
Well, ADUs are already, if you're saying that emphatically, ADUs, the code's already written. They would trump. They would trump, code's already written, you could send and receive for ADUs now, so anything that we adopt here, that was an already already administrative decision.
Okay, cause we don't want to interfere with.
No, in fact, uh maybe we. Talk a little bit more about ADUs at some other time with uh moderate housing, because we could find a way maybe to offset the T D R requirement.
We've got that.
What fight are you saying we need to gear up for? Cause that seemed like a.
Every, every single one of these decisions will come, it's legislative, it's gotta have a public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay, and so you are not only determining whether that parcel is ripe for sending. Do those units actually exist on that parcel? That's the question you've got to ask, and.
But we've just said anyway.
If you, if right now. In the forum based village area, it's. What is your gross developable acreage divided by what can the zone do? What can the zone produce? It's not. Can you actually get infrastructure here? And the reason it's not that is because, yes, you can get infrastructure everywhere, it's just time and money.
Right, but I thought we just did this on base. Where we, I thought that was just in um. We voted on one for Nordic. And I know, I think there was a discussion when I was out of the room for one for Wolf Creek. What other ones?
Uh right now, well, there's the C W land.
That but nothing form based there is what I'm saying.
Okay.
So when you're saying.
The Wolf Creek one actually is not a form base right now.
Right.
But in the Old Town Eden and Newtown Eden, we do have form base, and we've got developers working.
Just that. What's the boundary on that?
Um purple area on your map.
Is it forming?
Now, it's not zoned form base, we have the form based code. That is ready for someone to ask for that zone to happen. Now, the way that the form based code is intended to work is landlord comes in. Says, I wanna be rezoned to the form based zone, and your plan already says that I should be. It's still not entitlement, we can still say no, county commissioner can still say no, but. Those skids are greased, they should go very quickly, and that landlord who comes in and says. I'm in the form based village, small area plan, I wanna be rezoned to the form based village. And I know I have to transfer, I'm not telling you where I'm transferring from. I just know it has to be somewhere within these zones that the form base still exists. I still think we give them that reason.
Uh but you lost me when you said. When you said you'd have to prove that you have the T D R, and I said people have to prove that anyway, you have a list right now with like. I've sold. Ten of my thirty, like you, you're making a a database of them, yes, sort of, um.
Built into those.
But you said in form based zones, they don't have to prove it, is that correct?
Built into those calculations, you don't have to prove it.
Then. Then doesn't that just throw your whole other, like. How do you know that there's still six undeveloped out there if all of a sudden you don't have to prove them in form base, somebody could have sold off theirs in form base? And now all of a sudden be like, I get fifty more.
It's it's acreage, it's acreage divided by the zone. That's the zone allowance, so that, I mean, when you're saying proof, it's just a simple math formula.
Right.
What the plan says is that property doesn't have any development. Until we know it's feasible that they get water, it will be feasible, they can have sewer. So let's, let's do, let's talk about Nordic. The big, the big conversation about transferable development rights on the Nordic uh mountainside was. Okay, maybe they can get a few development rights in here, but they're not building all the way up the mountainside, so none of that should be counted towards their developability, right? There's some money at that and they can't.
Right.
Will it be tomorrow? No, they'll probably be able to build a lot faster if they build on flat land. But twenty thirty years from now, when someone's dumping money into that like they do on the Pacific coast, it's buildable.
Sure.
So asking the question today, can they get water and sewer up there? Well, that's challenge. How are we gonna prove that they can get water and sewer to the top of the mountain there? What the plan is saying is we wouldn't give them those density points to transfer. Because they cannot prove water and sewer visibility to the top of the mountain. Right? What that means is today in twenty twenty two, we had the opportunity to retire the development rights at the voluntary retired or. Move them, sorry, move them off that mountainside voluntarily by that landlord, and we said, eh, sorry. Even though the zone says, if you maximize your density, you can get four hundred and eighty eight units. You don't have water and sewer, therefore, we think you only have twelve units, right? Now, ten years goes by and water sewer. You know, he could build it right at that mountainside super quick, water sewers right to that village core, and he just digs a trench and puts it to the top of the mountain. Now we have no control. And he's in access, he has uh access to water and sewer and infrastructure. He's gonna build, well, he's gonna build wherever it makes sense for him. So at that time, he can come to us and say, hey, I wanna transfer him off the mountainside again, cause I don't wanna build expensive roads. Maybe. Or he could say, you know what, I've already got the infrastructure here. We just have to build a really cool driveway to get up to the top. I'm gonna take that opportunity to build it, and now they're building it in place where we didn't want it to be, so you're removing. The opportunity for them to have. Uh the choice. And to take the opportunity now. This is why I keep on saying, those those open space areas, imagine it filled with houses, three acre houses, because they will be. We're trying to solve problems that are twenty years in the making. By finding voluntary op vol voluntary opportunities today. So that's why I think we do a very simple calculation. Sewer and water is is easy. Plan also talks about wildlife corridors, talks about stream, my stuff, wetland, stuff like that. I've contemplated the best way to do that, my intention tonight was to to get the markers out and real start drawing. Um what I wanna do with this map is still not done, very much not done, um is identify the. Uh riparian corridors, the wetland areas, uh and put them on the map, but at the end of the day, are they undevelopable? If you could divide your property up into three acre parcels and have a really cool creek running through the backyard, that's a prime piece of property. Private creek, right? Not open to the public, if we can find a way to encourage that guy who's doing, who could otherwise. Make a really cool parcel, uh developable parcel, to leave that open and also put a trail along that creek. Through that open space and the conservation, why wouldn't we take the opportunity today in twenty twenty two? As opposed to waiting ten years for him to realize the economic benefit of it, just building a place. So preserving opportunities, yes, the argument against this is. We're gonna see develop happen a little, development happen a little bit faster, because we're putting those development rights in easier to access places. We're encouraging them to go to easier access places, my answer to that is that's true. We will probably see development happening a little bit faster than it otherwise would.
But if it's capped and we're not creating new T D Rs. If it happens now versus over the next fifty years, it's still gonna stop at some point because we run out.
That's right. And so whether we realize. Full build out in ten years from now.
Right.
Or in thirty years from now. The difference there is we have. Created opportunities for a better future with a voluntary changes here. Versus saying, well, your only option is to, or your, your real only option under the market is to develop in place. Which just results in one year for three acres everywhere. Now, if I was retirement age and I was in the valley and I was hearing this, I'd say. No, make it hard and make it slow, because I'll be gone before I have to see it. But I'm not here to plan for just one demographic, we've got a whole future. Ahead of us, including the dark children, uh who, you know, this valley could be, continue to be a great place long after we're here. And we have, we have to. Help those opportunities come to fruition. Whether it be fully voluntary or a little bit of regulation or highly regulated.
Apparently, that's the steps, so you take this. I don't know that I'm at any place, I don't know if you guys are, I'm not at any place like. I know. That's smart, right, to your point, uh.
I already started coloring, so.
You're okay, so but my question is, so you take this, let's say whatever happens here, you're gonna take this, next up, you're taking it to county commissioners, and then, I mean, public hearing. I don't call it a fire, we're, however many people right there sitting here, we. We want a voice opinion, right, we wanna know that we're doing, love their.
Absolutely.
Opinion, so. I think what we just proposed was. Needs a plan and it's fair for all, um you know, maybe there's a better way and that's where the public can come in, I, your option four. Seems like it makes the most sense, so I don't know if you guys agree, but or we are not very comfortable with that.
I'm sitting here trying to picture a load of every three acres here. And the taxes that we'd have to pay that.
That's the conversation I wanted to to get to as well.
Makes sense to convince them where it's already at. Tying them three acres together.
I'm there as well, uh I'm thinking tax, I'm thinking financial uh stability, I'm thinking the possibility for the valley to actually create a city. And actually determine its own future, uh by people who live in in the area uh long term. You're just not gonna realize, everybody will be paying really high taxes if we have that.
We have to get all the receivings.
No, I'm saying send and receive, and I I agree. I don't know, I'm stuck on the, if they're in the village area, if that would be a place to take it out, they're in there.
Not letting it go, and if you can't realize it there, it's gone.
We should be able to realize it there, period.
Yeah, I mean, that's what the plan says.
That's the plan says.
You know, if we're coming out, there's a reason. That something is not working. Otherwise, they'd stay.
Right.
And then they'd have to come to the board and plead the case.
So that would be, yeah, that would take legislative if that's the way we built it.
Yeah, so if you. I mean, certainly the economics are, if you got the infrastructure. Unless. Something we can't think of.
Most surely, the guy that owns the lot.
And.
Yeah, or family situations change, otherwise a lot of reasons why somebody might.
I mean, I'm just picturing the density up there in Wolf Creek, just as an example. Well. Uh all the infrastructure is right there. So why wouldn't you develop right there? I can't think of a reason, but there probably.
I mean, you get someone with enough money that says, I don't like what was created in Wolf Creek. And I'm a billionaire, so I'm gonna go over to this ranch, I'm gonna go buy as many rags as can, you create another village, but to your point. The market gets to determine that, cause they they made it financially.
What's wrong with that? Because it may. If that happened, it would make existing identified villages not humongous. Villages, sort of stretching the word definition of village. They're meeting the needs of the people.
I'm gonna give you guys just uh just a scale. Tana Huntsville, I I don't know what it is now, but the last time I checked, the A C S has about nine hundred residents. Wolf Creek has about two, any five hundred or so residents, and so that's. If we're, if Wolf Creek in its geography is a village, that's twenty five hundred, I'm sorry, not units, twenty five hundred people.
Why is, I mean, you look at Huntsville, why is it desirable to live in Huntsville? If they have nine hundred people. Why would you ever want to live there? Why would you ever want to live there? What do you see when you think of Huntsville?
Trees.
Trees.
Rural uh streetscapes.
First thing when you say Huntsville, I see a park. And you're down the streets and there are trees. It's mature community with landscaping and it's not. Lots of stuff going on. And there's a community of people knowing their neighbors and loving living there. Even though it's the highest density in the valley.
You just said that Wolf Creek was.
Wolf Creek's higher, but it's dead.
Yeah, but it's. Yeah, there are things that offset the density. There are things that soften it. Make it lessen the impact.
Yeah.
All right. I I went to a uh one year I got involved with a guy that was talking about healthy communities and during studies all over the world about what makes a community healthy.
Physically, physical health. Is that what you're saying?
Healthy as in. It continued. Okay. Why did this area get blighted? Why did this area get blighted? They were built at the same time. What's the difference? Blighted area was cookie cutter, was all the same. They had all these regulations, you can only do this and you can only do that. The other place. Oh, yeah, young families can live above somebody's garage. And old people can 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 either live in their home. There is community, there is socialization.
Yeah.
They weren't socialist, but they were.
Be careful what I word.
And they had these little parks and elderly people could go with their walkers to the park and watch the little kids play. The houses got recycled and remodeled and they didn't look like cookie cutters. And these communities went on for generations. As opposed to pretty soon they're tearing down these subdivisions. And trying to do something else, because they don't work anymore because they were highly regulated. They had to look just like this and be just this color. Just this kind of people got to live there. Didn't work. We gotta be mindful of that kind of stuff in our valley. Where sometimes we get so concerned about, we gotta protect my view. But we're making it so that my kids and your kids can't come back where they went to school and they grew up and lived and they can't raise their families there because they can't afford to be there. And that's not healthy. Well, we got fifty percent of the valley is second homes now. Is that?
Number shifted in twenty twenty uh because of the pandemic, um actually went down quite a bit, but I think we'll see.
Significant amount of homes up there. Are not families sending their kids to school and neighbors associating with each other, their vacation. Okay, well, we decided that we wanted a resort up there and that's what we're getting. But for the people that live there, if they have the vision I see is you don't feel like you're being cranked. You don't necessarily have five hundred acres of open space in your backyard. You don't feel cranked. You've got neighbors you associate with. If you want to be a sender, self, if you want to be get a something next door to you received. Let the market, let the people figure out what's gonna make them successful. And we've got a much better chance in fifty years that valley valley is gonna be a place that is a delight to live in.
Yeah. So if you guys ever thought like town hall, I mean, the people voice here, do you do public area, do you do town hall? Because are we trying to present something? Do we let the people speak?
I think it, I think an open house would be appropriate.
Let everyone have a moment of saying, hey, these are our options.
Yeah.
Let's, let's talk about it, right? And I hear you. Jeff, I I agree with that. I'm just, is that you know, I I'm just an option for us to think about, we let them, we hear that.
It's, yeah.
Because if you don't have public hearing with an option, right, you're hearing about one of these, let's look at all options.
If you guys want to go to town hall, um we'll have to clear it for the commissioners, make sure they're comfortable with it. Uh, but yeah, we can certainly do. Uh, I would suggest we do an open house. Uh, everybody can come. They got markers, draw stuff, uh hate it, love it, you know, stickers. Um, because those are really informative. I was hoping the exercise we do tonight would be similar to what we usually do at those kind of meetings where I go home, I take those kind of meetings, I take fifty maps home and uh try and see what commonality has come out of it. Sign around that and bring it back to you guys and say, here were the commonalities that fell out, let's talk about this. So if you'd like to do that, let's do it.
I think a lot of the bigger, I don't know, I'm just pitching ideas, I'm not.
Well, chair staying, as we don't need enough of everything.
Right.
See, I worry if I take this marker and I make a mark here. Okay, I got people saying, hooray. And I got other people saying, no, you're stealing from me. Okay. But but if it's if you own it, you decide am I a receiver or a sender and that works for everybody. We're not stealing from anybody.
The reality is, is I would never, what I own would never be in a position to send, because I don't have enough property. It's the circumstances I'm in, I can't send. I I own it, because I just yeah, I didn't buy a bunch of property. Some of you in here might have more property that you can send. So I think it's really I don't think it's a necessarily taking away from people. You either have or you don't anyways.
I was kind of thinking the word stealing is a little, is a little harsh, only because today, that right doesn't exist unless you're sending to a form based village. Right. And so what we're doing is we're creating a new stick in the bundle. The question is, is how do you use the stick?
But I I think in if if I weren't involved in all this, I wouldn't understand what form based what. Right out like that.
We still go, we still.
Once I say you make a dress and you put her on the form and.
Is it concrete work?
But the, but the concept that okay, government is not using its heavy hand to tell me I'm a loser or a winner, whatever that is. It's not setting up the ring so we can go in and box it out. Who gets this and who doesn't get it? Just let the market figure it out. If you've got the, remember that little video we saw with Brent Bateman? And he talked about sticks. Property comes with lots of sticks and one is I can occupy it, I can exclude it, I can do this, I can do that. But you've all got these sticks. Unless we give it them up with CCNRs, that's getting up a stick. To somebody else says, but we've got these sticks. Okay, it's my little castle. For my time on earth. And I can kind of figure it out. And my neighbor, he can figure it out too. We all equally can figure things out.
I've got high hopes that something like that can work. Going back to the word predictability, uh Browning Ranch might, you might see a village there. Um, that's an area that I think a lot of people would say, well, we should work with Mrs. Browning and get that preserved. Well, she could choose to go buy, she's got a lot of land and she's not too far away from where sewer is going to be uh in the near future. Are we okay with that outcome? And ultimately, I think is the public okay with that?
Do I have a right to tell Mrs. Browning what she gets to think about doing with her property? I don't think so. I don't want that. She gets, she, it's her property, she can say, I want to be a village, I want to donate it all, I want to do whatever. Hooray for her choice, because that's what property rights are all about.
And if we take that to the literal meaning, that means the zoning doesn't exist.
No, I didn't say that. I just, she gets to, we're we're in the context of I want to put it in the land trust. I want to preserve it. I want to buy up a bunch of development rights and make some little thing here, some village here, we'll call it Browning Village. She gets to decide what she wants to do. It's she can keep running cows on it, she can do.
So. That's the question confined within existence zone. Is that?
It's owning, yeah, I mean.
Are you saying TDRs don't, if you buy more TDR than you need, you have to prove viability of resources, that overlay zone, supersede whatever's underneath it.
That's what the general plan suggests. That's not what I'm suggesting. But yeah, normally I would suggest exactly the general plan suggesting. I remember when we wrote this section, it was a challenging section to deal with and I just I felt like it was kind of a death now in TDRs, but sorry.
No, I just, I I I agree with what you're saying in terms of uh I'm all for property rights and people not coming in challenging them in any way, saying you can't, you no longer do anything you want or what you think you want or whatever. But at the same time, when you're trying to create like city planning, if you're trying to say, listen, we need we need things that make sense and we need infrastructure to go here. And in order for that to happen, we need density points here, or we need roads to go here. At some point, you have to be the curmudgeon that says, because for the betterment of the whole area. Somebody does lose out. I I it's a, I don't know enough. I'm not an engineer. This is my first experience with any kind of planning.
You don't have to be an engineer.
But but I do think that at some point, it's not all gonna be nice. It's not all gonna be, we don't want to tell anybody what to do. Because otherwise you're gonna have the measles. So at some point, we do need to be ugly and say, we don't want the measles. So somebody's gonna lose out.
There are a lot of cases across the country. Sure.
It's entitled right now.
It is.
It is.
We can't change that except something, right, something else. But so do we take should county government take the role of dictator? And it's five and ten and twenty year plans and say, this is what kind of track we're gonna produce. Take it or leave it. This is what we're gonna do. We're making you guys do this. Or we're trying to help facilitate people's living the dreams on their land, coming up with what they think. I don't know, Mrs. Browning, I'm just okay, there's a beautiful piece of land, I'd love to drive and buy it. I don't have a right to say, just because I love driving by, you can't do what you want with your.
I agree.
No, that's she she has the privilege to create something that in her mind will be very useful. Whatever she does, open space or village or the cast, whatever. And I'm not smart enough to tell her what she ought to do. That's what we ought to be doing, because it's it really dooms things to favor. The more you regulate, the more you put your thumb on, no, you will do this. That takes the beauty out of creativity, individualism. It'll destroy our valley.
I uh obviously I come from a different perspective, because community planning, I can show you hundreds of communities that chose not to now, just to let the individuals.
I would like to do this. And that's where the plan that comes in to help and assist her.
Okay, okay.
The structure.
Thinking you were in a different spot.
No, no, they goes, go through this zoning and all the stuff we have. First of all, Mrs. Browning, you gotta have sewer. You gotta have some way to deal with wastewater. You've gotta have water. You've gotta have roads. You gotta have fire, all this stuff you have to have to do your dream. Now let's work together and see how we can help you get those things. So that you can meet the requirements that the county has established, the zoning all these regulations.
You you were in a different place.
Well, slightly different place.
Because you were thinking, yeah, if you want to create this thing with the property you have, why don't you maybe create it over here? Is that what you were getting at? Because that's what I.
Sort of, um. I I do believe that as a community there is value in looking at your entire community to create a community vision and move towards that vision as a collective. Now, should individual property rights exist? Absolutely. And should we allow the market to govern uh to the extent that it's responsible? Absolutely. Um, but we have seen the market produce irresponsible development. And to the market's credit, to the uh credit of market will adjust, it will adjust. But we gotta deal with it for the twenty or thirty years between the time that it does adjust. And is that a community in which we want to live? Is it the blighted side or is it the successful side? Who gets to choose who lives on the blighted side? Who gets to choose who lives on the successful side? And then unfortunately, the biggest challenge is it's a has and a has not. So either it's a has and a has not that we organize for the community good, or it's the has and the has not for the people who've got the financial wherewithal to do what they want with their property.
I don't think, I'm smart enough to figure out what the community good is.
I asked. And we adopted a general plan.
Now in general terms. Yeah, we we ought to have clean water, clean water. Okay. We've gotta have roads to drive around on, they're super congested with accidents going like crazy. There ought to be some speed limits. They don't exist on five hundred doors. I know we can't. But we said. I mean, there's some.
Gotta have a road alternative to go around.
Yeah, I mean, there's some things we have to do as a community to be a safe community.
Yeah. I I agree um on on that respect. I think we just had a a difference of two what level.
Yeah, but
And that's okay.
She says, hey, I would, I really had this great thing and I've always thought about it. And I would like to have a village that looks like this on my property and I picking up all these rights and I would like to do it. And the community comes along and says no, we don't think you should be able to do that. Well, wait. Okay, that's, and we try to avoid we we try to avoid conflict. We create conflict if we say, you're a loser.
Yeah.
You're a loser. Now we got conflict. If we say.
That calls casualties of zoning.
Well, and and we've got zoning, okay? I'm not saying James zoning, I'm saying let's do what we can to avoid further conflict. By saying, okay, you want to be a receiver? Great. You want to be a sender? Great. We're not gonna pick winners and losers. We're gonna encourage like the general plan says, creating areas that are more open than they otherwise would be. Whether they be small or large. The market will kind of figure out where all these eight thousand units are gonna be built. Kind of have the sense that if they're built on every three acres, it's not gonna be quite as enjoyable for all of them as it would otherwise.
And if they're built on in high-rise condos, they're not, we're not gonna get the pleasure out of that either, right? And so it's somewhere between the two.
I mean, we're a valley that's twenty miles long.
Yeah.
What what is it between Ogden and Salt Lake? How many miles is that?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, so Ogden to Centerville.
Yeah.
It's twenty miles. Okay, it's a lot of area. You can have some high-rise condos somewhere between Ogden and Centerville.
Yeah, yeah. But not ever, but not.
But not.
What you're saying, we're not creating a city, yeah, yeah. Okay. Well, um, I mean, I can buy in to this, we can create these these options. Um, what what we will need to do on option four, uh this this new option is number one, determine is this gonna be by right or is this gonna be legislative? And I think what I'm hearing is, let's make it by right. So we will create a a new zone. It's an overlay zone that says even though you're in the eighty-three zone or whatever zone you're in, you can send or you can receive, right? At your leisure, when you receive, so I got, let's just say three acres from the state yard, and I got a development right for one. Right? Uh, when you receive, you're automatically not building a three acre lot, right? Because if you're gonna build those units that you're receiving, if I just get one, right, I'm building if I do it equally, one, one and a half, or two, one and a half acre lots. And so now zoning, the rules that create the lot size and the specific density of my property are different. And so we have to adopt new rules to help govern that. Otherwise, we are going, well, back off, we don't have to. But if we don't adopt rules to help Mrs. Browning, for example, transfer them in and create a community that does provide for the health, safety and welfare of its residents. It's it's kind of a free for all, right?
Well, no, because it's, those rules are already in place. Well, no, cuz it's, those rules are already in place. Now, whether it's Mrs. Browning with. What, I don't know how many acres she has, or Mrs. Smith that has nine acres.
And, and which rules are you referring to?
Water. Wastewater. Utilities. Okay, roads. Uh, all those things.
Infrastructure.
Ju- just cuz, uh, just cuz Mrs. Smith with her. She's got nine acres. Okay, she could have sold off two of those. Now she's got nine acres with one house, or she could have bought. Three and now she's got nine acres with. Six houses, but whatever, she's still gotta have water. You gotta have sewer.
Yes.
She's gotta have. Uh, roads. And all the other things. Okay, just cuz she has some development rights, doesn't mean she can use them if she can't fill the other squares.
Okay, so lot development standards, I, I see where you're going with that. I, I don't mind it. Lot development standards. Are the things that we're essentially waving, right? You don't have to have a three acre lot, nor are you restricted to a single family dwelling.
You would probably have to adjust things like setbacks. Well, not necessarily setbacks, but road frontage and things like that.
Uh, uses. Uh, how many lots I can have on a property?
No.
Commercial.
Let's, let's say you got a three acre lot now. Uh, you gotta have so much frontage, right? Okay, if you got three development rights on that three acre lot, your frontages are probably gonna have to be. Or need to be reduced a little bit or you can't.
Can't did, right?
You can't get there.
You're going back.
Can't get rezoned. Or you leave it the same and yeah, so if I transfer two units onto my property that already has one, I build a triplex.
Yeah, there's, I don't know, but we're, we're trying to get general ideas. And, and the most general is we want to create a more livable, wonderful, real feeling. Valley with open space. By taking from some rights from some areas that come about.
By buying them voluntarily.
And they end up somewhere else. Because the general plan says we recognize if you're gonna not have measles, you're gonna have to have. More densities somewhere else.
So, yeah. Flesh, flesh that out cuz you're, you're like, this is where I'm getting confused. I think you're saying.
You're gonna have to build a form-based plan around your. You, you don't have to. But that's the question that I, that I had. Well.
Now you're going in this form-based, if a Mrs. Browning wants to say, okay, I wanna have this village. Then she works with the planning department and they come up with something just like.
See, there's, there's where I think we've got, uh, a little bit of blockage because. Going in that direction is legislative. She's gotta create. System that allows for that form-based village or whatever it is that regulates. How many development rights? Uh, what are the lot sizes? How many, uh, dwelling units could fit on one lot? Where is?
Things like their development agreement. So she's committed to the, to the planning staff and saying, look, I've got five hundred developments and it's like bottom off.
Right.
And now I wanna put them on this. Property here. It's no different than I'm thinking of old snow basin rock. They got sixty-four development rights. Okay.
Tension.
All right, okay, how do we use these things? Or.
Okay, I get it.
John Lewis, I got this many development rights.
So each one will be done by development agreement. I've got concerns about onesie, twosie lots, you know, small lots.
Well.
And development agreements. So do we put a size requirement? Or a number of units requirement?
A seismic requirement would slow a lot of that down.
Okay.
But then what's the size requirement?
We have to draw a line in the sand. That's, that's why we've got legis, well, that's what commissioners have legislative.
And then why was it not saying you're a winner and I'm a loser? Cuz I have a smaller people property.
That's why I'm. That's why I haven't pushed back really far because I think that gets us to exactly where.
The general concept is like a general plan. Yeah, let's put this other tool in the toolbox. Because we've got some tools already to try and reduce density, create more open space, density in certain areas by moving it. Okay, we've already been moving it with development agreements. Maybe fine for a Mrs. Browning kind of thing. It's problematic if you get into smaller things, right? That's what you're suggesting.
Yes, administratively.
We need some kind of a something that says, oh, here's kind of like a zone.
Yeah.
Right, here's what you do.
Yeah, kind of the, what Snow Basin did or what.
Okay.
Nordic did without the, the village or.
Reality is we got eight thousand units to go. We're gonna have more places than Nordic to put them.
Agreed.
Yeah, so how do we get some places to put them? That can be this vision I tried to get, to draw.
Yeah.
Of where we reduce impact. We have smaller open space. You get the feel, you're not being crunched. And it's a, it's a desirable kind of living environment. But it's not in a huge village. Okay, now if we. I'll agree on, okay, that's a concept we can buy into. Now we can get into the details. Okay, what do we do about this?
So that's, uh, like Janet, I think picked this up pretty quick. That's the full circle. Now we're back to the very beginning. Because if we get to the point where we're getting to the details at that time, that's legislative. That's a public hearing that's going, and so. Why would, why wouldn't we just do a public hearing from the beginning?
Well, because what you're suggesting with one, two and three is. I or we, small group decide this is the way the picture's gonna be drawn.
Gotcha.
Okay.
So let's pull back from one, two and three and let's talk for a second, uh, maybe five. I don't wanna complicate it, it needs to be, but maybe this is five and this is going to. Uh, exactly what Jason read. Every single parcel. Gets a review on its own merits from the very beginning to determine whether or not transfers should even exist. Right? And so what that essentially is telling us is. Is the parcel capable of supporting the density that they're proposing to move? We're in a, we're in a legislative arena at that time. And so. Is that the right place to move it from? And is that the right place to move it to? Well, what? What, what are the, the definitions or the parameters around the right place to move it from and to? We're going right into that development agreement, uh, arena anyway.
I think we're. We're going by.
Passing each other.
Okay.
I'm waving at you as I'm.
Or if we're saying let the market control, let somebody decide to be a buyer, a sender or receiver. We're leaving lots of flexibility as we go into the future. I read you as saying we, why not just decide now?
No.
This property can't, this property can.
No, option five is, is let's not decide. Let's do it on a parcel by parcel basis as landowners come to ask, ju- just like I think you're saying. But we need to be clear, we're not creating a new right for them to transfer yet. It has to be after we vetted it through the legislative process cuz that's when we're creating the rules.
Well.
And they can come in, like, I'd say we create the rules, but they come in.
Administrative, all this stuff. I'm trying to push that aside. How we get there is the detail. But if we have a picture of where we're going. Which reminds me of a picture, okay? I'm not an art expert, but I know that over time, that the impressionist one that came along. That was really weird, right? Monet and, and these guys, that was really weird. We're not used to it. But now is, oh, wow. Wow, that's cool. And it coexists with what came before and what came after. Okay, cuz it wasn't locked down. There was no rule. It's kind of rules. You're gonna be an artist. You can't paint like this Monet guy. Okay, but I don't wanna, I don't want to restrict the creativity. Of something that's gonna be wonderful to come along by saying, hey, the rule says you can't do it.
Okay, so, uh, follow along with me cuz I think we are passing each other. Today. Whether we have or don't have a TDR program. What you're saying is available to anyone who asks the question. Like you mentioned. Uh, CW Land is asking the question, John's asking the question. And so it's available to anyone who asks that question. That's here today. If the market is there to say, we, you know, me, landowner thinks that I can build, should build a village right here. They just go through the process. Right now, today.
Yeah, we just don't wanna create the situation where it's, oh, we decided that your land can't have a village on it. So you can't.
Okay, so we can't create a rule that says that. We cannot create a rule that says you can't ask.
Or you can ask, but the answer would be, no, we decided under option two, you're only a sender, you can't be a receiver.
But that's booked into the legislative process. If it's administrative. We, the county, the government, Big Brother has no ability to tell you no. And so if it's administrative and we have no ability to tell you no, those rules need to be defined cuz we can't go in and define them later. Uh, there's a few of those cases and a few, uh, actually court cases in the state. That have overturned decisions that cities have made because they tried to make the rules after the fact. They've gotta be set for administrative decisions to happen. But if we're, they're gonna be legislative. Guys, let, ask, ask what, ask whatever you want. And if you've got a great idea that you can get some support for. From the commissioners, then let's do it. And let's say Nordic didn't wanna go the four base village direction. They wanted to do their own thing. We probably would have facilitated that. And we would have said, okay, do, do the snow basin thing. Show us what you're gonna do and how you're gonna govern yourself. That looks great. Walt Disney, good, good Disney line. Let's adopt it. As long as it's the right place and the right time.
At our Zoom work session, I think it was. Last one? Uh, yeah, I think it was Trevor that said, what happens if we do nothing? And it basically is that.
It's available.
It's available.
Right.
Anybody can ask.
Right.
And it comes legislatively.
I do hear oftentimes people say, well, the vehicle doesn't exist, we can't do it. We're creating it on a, on a development agreement by development agreement basis. Okay, so this is where I'm asking you to, to, to stick with me on this because. I would like to keep it that. I would like to enable that, right? Enable the ability for anyone to realize an economic future on their property. And, and process it through that legislative system that is already there. I wanna go one step further and actually give the property or owners the stick. And say. We've already decided whoever the, the, uh, glorious we are. Have decided that in these areas, you get an extra stick. You don't only have the opportunity to go and ask. And talk about and, and bring the market to show that there is something that you can do on your property through the legislative decision process. You just by right, sell your. Your, uh, development right, or if you're in the right area that we've already kind of, this is kind of a pre-vet. Right? But you could buy right, receive. Cuz we've already pre-vetted those. Doesn't mean you're precluded on your property, Jeff. From asking. I've got a great piece of property here. It is perfect. I can provide water. I can provide sewer. I am gonna go through this process. I've got the market. That, that's already there.
The way you're saying is administrative. In the village knows legislative.
I, I'm saying administrative. Already defined.
By right, so.
Right, right. And we could put in big bold letters in that that says. This does not mean that this is all exhaustive and through the legislative process. So this is what I'm saying here. Uh, we've got purple. We've got this purple area right here that is your receiving area. We've already kind of pre-vetted that, right? We have pre-vetted that one. That is the Nordic, or sorry, that is the old, old town Eden, um, village area. Uh, and Kirk back here, my buddy Kirk, he's right here. And he said, you know, I've got the ability and the wherewithal and the resources. To do this. County, why wouldn't you do it? Well, we'll look at the plan and we'll say, I know the plan doesn't really anticipate it going out that far, but it doesn't actually say what the definite boundaries are. And you're gonna develop your property, you're gonna put twenty units the acre on your property and you're buying them all from Mrs. Browning right next door. Great. That is exactly what the plan says. We've already pre-vetted that idea. We haven't pre-vetted it to this extent. Where you're just automatically given the new bundle, the new stick in your bundle. We are pre-vetting it through the general plan, right? Which already says this is a great idea, Kirk. Now we're gonna give you that stick because this area here, we were able to already anticipate. This area here, you have shown us the anticipation. Here's your stick.
Well, why, why not do now, for, and say you get the stick?
So that we can, but what I'm trying to tell you is. If they are automatically have the stick, if there aren't predefined rules, we can't make the rules after they have.
Give me an example of a rule. That's not predefined.
Uh, what are the uses that are allowed in that particular area? Any use?
But with this overlay, what are the uses that are allowed?
We haven't defined that.
Are they allowed in the zone?
Well, okay. With the overlay, we haven't defined what new uses are allowed. And so today, if we only apply the overlays on, we do not say what new uses are allowed. The only use is allowed on Kirk property is what's in the AB three zone. Agriculture dwelling units, single-family dwelling units that we don't allow more than single-family dwelling units. Um, I think you could do a lodge, you could do, uh, uh, conference center or something like that. You could do a bed and breakfast. So there are a number of things you could do, but not a condo complex, not a hotel.
Not twenty.
Could pick up. Areas with similar density.
Yeah. And that's the pre, that's the pre-defining of the rules. That's where we've gotta come in and say, if we're gonna just give you the stick. Here, here are the boundaries.
But, but the rules in number four, the number four could be adopted. But I can see, yes, what users would be allowed. And you have something that says areas of similar density, you pick up those uses.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds good.
But because then. Their existing uses, they've already been defined. And they just transfer to that property.
Wait, I don't make sure I want to understand. Is that saying that somebody who wants an AB three to pick up twenty, they need to pick up twenty other AB threes? Is that what you just said? No, what do you mean by similar usage?
If he's picked, if somebody, if Kirk picks up a whole bunch of development rights and he says, I want twenty units, is there some place in the valley that's on twenty?
Yeah, we got the Sea Bear one and we've got the FR three. I would suggest we just use the, the, uh, the form-based code. It's far more flexible. Uh, it lists every single use that was listed in any other zone.
So that would be part of number four. Anybody can send or receive and if you pick up density, you, you, you pick up the uses that are defined in the one base code.
Is that by a right reason, then they just pick up the points and so they just get them?
They have to do, they have to have the overlay zone applied to their property first. Now, if we adopt a code that says this really isn't an overlay zone, this is just allowed anywhere, sending and receiving. Uh, then it's by right, yes, in every zone that sending and receiving is allowed in. It would just be by right to anyone.
Which is, that's the only thing you would be, if you're gone, like it would, they would be able to go there and just do twenty units the acre. If we can put some type of process of a download, or if we're saying some type of legislative.
Well, it's, uh, it's a question of what the boundaries are. I don't mean, I don't mean geographic boundaries. I mean color within the lines, right? What are the rules? Uh, how high can I go? How wide can I go? All of those are gonna need to be predefined. We do that in every single one of our zones. And so if we're going to, if we're changing the fundamental nature of property that is zoned AB three. To allow additional density, it's just a bad thing. It's fine. We need to say. First off. There are detrimental effects to density. Right? Impacts. So at the very least, we need to have the rules about the impacts. But can I, you know, can I manufacture dynamite next to my strip club, next to my preschool? Uh, so we've gotta have uses very well defined and very well.
Yeah, I'm not just suggesting they've probably already been defined for these areas in the valley that have that.
Yeah, uh, they do.
And probably I'm looking at your pebble in the. Water, the rings go out from it. So if you're gonna have this. Uh, if Kurt's gonna have his twenty units per acre, then he's gonna have to, uh. taper out to. The three acres on the.
I, I, I love the idea. I really do. Executing it on every unique piece of property is gonna be a challenge. Because Kirk might have, I haven't been in your backyard yet. You got thirty-eight, five acres or so, right? Okay, he might have a clip in his backyard, right? And so the way that he's organizing that with the taper. Um, I love it. But we won't be able, the, this is like the, the oil regulators, right? Oil regulators won't be allowed to come onto the rig to verify that they're in compliance with these policies. Cuz they've already been given the right. Does that make sense? We can't go in later and say, Kirk. You didn't follow the ripple rule. Because we've already given him the right to do. What he's proposing to do.
Well, it seems to me when we go on to Wolf Creek, we talk about stuff there. You're there with every. With a fine tooth comb going through everything.
Yes. So that's, that, that is it. I, I wanna make sure that's clear because that from the very beginning is not giving Wolf Creek the right. Wolf Creek has to come and ask for that, right?
Well, but they have, they have rights attached to their property up there. They have density. They can go do that.
Yes.
But they have to sewer, water.
Yes.
Roads.
Fine tooth comb.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Already exists.
Okay, so, so maybe. The allowance to send there, maybe that's what I, I, I think maybe I'm drawing some conclusions or allows to send to that property. Well, that's completely Kirk's choice. And as he's sending with there. He's still gonna have to go to the legislative process. To define, all right, here's how my roads are gonna be laid out. Here's, here's connectivity and here's the uses and here's how it ripples out. Whether or not he's allowed to do that density. Is his choice, not ours.
He can.
But how it's planned. That's the predictability question.
Specifically in a. Sorry, I'm changing your zone now, but like a one house for three acres, but he went out because of this overlay. He went out and he picked up fifty TDRs. And on his three acres, he's gonna stick fifty condos and now his neighbor lives next to fifty condos when they're. What about their rights?
I'm gonna double speak out of both sides of my mouth for a second. Cause on one side, I'm gonna say, well, they didn't buy Kirk's property. And so they don't have his air rights or his view shed rights or anything like that. Uh, Kirk has all that. Now, the other side of my mouth, I'm gonna say.
But Kirk didn't live in a, in a condo zone. I live in a condo, so I get it. Like, I, I have no say in the fact that I live next to short-term rentals and people partying. And I hate it. It's not fun, but I knew what I was doing when I bought it.
Right. So that's the other side of my mouth. I'm gonna say in the realm of predictability, I mean, let's just look at finance, uh, finances. When you're gonna go get financing, you've gotta show, you gotta demonstrate something that is worth something. Um, you go run comparables, right? You get a real estate appraisal. A lot of that comes down to, well, what's happening here? What is predicted here? If Kirk can all of a sudden flip a, a, a strip club next door, and let's get away from strip club and go to, uh, uh, a high, uh, high intensity. Um, preschool, screaming children with dogs. That's, it's a preschool about. Right next door in his village, right? You didn't invest in property that had that kind of noise next door. And now all of a sudden, now this is the full circle. We're getting into why does zoning exist?
I was gonna say, so why not just make the whole valley a form base and people could do whatever the heck they want?
Okay, look at the school up on. Um, well, this, um, money crystal.
It's a great example.
Hold on, what school and money crystal? Oh, the waypoint?
Yeah, I, I was gonna say the fact that you didn't own was there is.
I'm thinking you're further up the road, so I'm like, I didn't know there was a slow further up waypoint, yeah.
I mean, there was, there was controversy about that.
Signs in front yards saying, keep the little shits out.
No. That's before my time.
Well, but then the state law trumped, I guess, and said, no, you can't exclude this kind of use in residential.
Guess how many, that's correct. And guess how many complaints we've received about that? And you talk to the neighbors who are out there now, quiet.
Oh, they love them. Uh, they're great community members.
And it's open space. I mean, you got a building in the middle of a big. Yeah.
So I, I'm sensitive to what you're bringing up, okay? I live here. It, it's the same thing as working around, isn't it? Here, we're living in our little neighborhood and all of a sudden it's a motel zone. Okay, so there your ripple comes in.
Yeah.
And maybe the ripple thing can.
Question, what happens to your point, movie, right? The developers come in, they squeeze the house between. I just think about that, like all of a sudden someone comes in and puts just like a, let's just say like a. Three stack, right? It's just three levels high, actually, and go forward, cause it's building code, right?
And it's modern income for people.
Yeah, it's just all of a sudden like, no, it's fine either way, but all of a sudden there you have this like. There ha, it might go like. You lose all track of it all, right? Like if we take that route and lose that ability that someone just coming to be like. Because I bought all those rights, I can now put a condo tower here, this three stack. And that's what I mean, and all of a sudden you've got like. Pinkly Ranch and Gabe Randy right here. And all of a sudden you're just like. There's no continuity. All of a sudden it feels like, remember John said, uh, you have the log hat on, it's next to the, next to my. Next to stucco, next to storage units, you're gonna get that. And so that's, I hear you and I agree with the rights, but how do you control that?
Well, there's gonna, or there's a will with the way. I mean, some can be figured out. Okay.
That was the details for sure.
But he's saying you have to have the details nailed down.
If, if we're giving a by right, if it's an administrative, we're adding to your bubble of sticks.
How do you get away from legislating here?
So, and, and yeah, the legislative is, it's available. Kirk wants to come in, ask to make the changes. We'll look at the plan and we'll say, oh, Kirk, the plan doesn't suggest a village there. Let's do this. Let's run a plan amendment and a rezone at the same time. So plan amendment, form-based village, shows what it's gonna look like. We're gonna help you add a couple of roads, cause we think for the community's sake, it's gonna be needed for fire access or for whatever. They go through the process. You go to the public hearing, the pub, uh, all the neighbors say, I did not buy in a condo area. Therefore, Kirk needs to, you know, grab his paddle and start going uphill. Or. You guys say, great, this looks great. This follows the plan. He's eaten up density points. He's creating a new village zone.
New villages. We need more villages.
And, and that's okay. Yeah, that's absolutely.
So how, how do we make it so that it can happen? Well, there's gonna be a lot of stuff goes into being a new village.
Yeah. Why do the villages that are on the map right now exist? They were already there, right?
There was a hot springs there and.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
And there was a ski resort over at Nordic.
Right. And why were they already there?
Jefferson had, uh, decided he wanted to live over there.
But I think you ought to be legislative and let the community. Voice and they still, doesn't mean everybody goes along their way. They don't want. Some of the stuff that we're approving because this is, it's in line with the general plan.
Uh, honestly, the, the arguments that we've had about Nordic, um. Don't put it here, i- i- and primarily coming just from that neighborhood. We didn't see a big turnout from valley-wide residents, just that neighborhood, saying, we don't want that here. We weren't part of the general plan and if we were, we would have said, no. Um, you're gonna get that more so when Kirk, I'm just, if Kirk asks for it. But that doesn't mean that it doesn't still comply with the goals, objectives and principles of the plan. And so when I come in, I'm gonna say, what does our plan say? Okay, it says do this, it says eat up density points and move them into villages. It says kind of do a little analysis to figure out whether or not this is a developable area, okay? Kirk's asking for it, market's ready for it. Um, he's done masterful master plan here. I've added a couple of streets in here. Um, I'm gonna recommend a rule, plan says, let's do this.
So when your rules here, so let's forehappen. I suggest, you know, you pick up zoning rules, well. It, it's got, I, I can see the need to develop some criteria, objective criteria that haven't been met.
Yeah.
If you're going to do. Huge density.
Yeah.
Kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Uh, I think you don't want a duplex or a three plaques or a four plaques. You don't want these little clusters either, I think. You kind of have to create a line that you can't cross. I mean, I could, if somebody transferred a bunch of density rights to my one acre, I could essentially tear my house down and build a four plaques or whatever.
Would you be okay if you were on the other side of the line? You couldn't do it, cause you're on the wrong side of the line, but you're coming and ask for the line to be moved, so you could do it. Would you be okay with that kind of situation? That's legis, legislative. So you're on the right side of the line, administrative, build your duplex. You're on the wrong side of the line, right on the other side. You come in, you ask for the line to go around your property. Legislative, public hearing. I don't think I'd be opposed to that. That's, that's exactly where we're supposed to be.
But I mean, still transfers, everyone's still send, everyone's still receive. You just have to come in for this body and request it, right?
Yeah, request the ones that we haven't pre-vetted. I do suggest we do pre-vet some.
You're gonna get a million people in here. Once these things become valuable, if everybody's coming in, find, sell the rights, transfer them.
Yeah, we should be so lucky.
Here's a problem. The measles problem, and it's three acres on.
Right.
Okay, cause you got a house of three acres, you got what, a quarter acre for the house? And a little bit for the lawn, but now you gotta have a small lawn because Charlie's thinking he has all his waters for your lawn. Okay, and now what do you got on the rest? You got weeds.
That reminds me.
Okay. But if you have the ability to pick up a development right. And now you got two houses on your three acres, you got less weeds. The, the place looks better. I mean, uh, I'm thinking, uh, one acre subdivision is down. They look great.
They didn't just transfer from one acre, sorry, one acre to three acre in ninety-eight?
Um, yeah.
So you wanna go?
No, I'm not saying upzone everything to. One acre again, but I'm saying there's a problem with three acre lots. There's a whole bunch of weeds and junk and stuff on these lots. If they had two houses on them or three houses on them.
You would still pull a density from somewhere.
But you're pulling density from somewhere else.
So that is, you are, you were right where. My thought was on these white areas, the, the no zone. The white areas is, that's the free for all, send, receive, do what you wanna do. Uh, but we still put some kind of a rule on what the minimum lot size is. And my thought was, well, maybe we just go back to the one acre rule. But one acre, you could still cluster.
Do you not now open yourself up to either? I don't know if it's a lawsuit, but at least the argument that you then just stole development rights.
No, because.
Because people had one acre rights with development and then you took it and you gave them. One house for three acres, but now you're putting them back to one acre. But they don't get their development right.
No, but he's, he's not saying go back to the one acre minimum. He's saying you have to buy a right.
To get it.
To get a one acre development. So you're transferring, you have to transfer in. If you have one acre and you wanna do two houses. You gotta go buy a right from somebody that has three acre minimum per lot into that one acre zone.
Okay.
So you make three one acre lots. Or three half acre lots, actually.
There should be a size requirement. But if you went to one acre.
But it is a fact where we have a lot of three acres. It, it is messy. What do you do with all this?
Yeah.
It's too small to farm. But you got these three acres and you have to have it.
A three acre backyard, right, versus a six acre open space piece. Uh, that's meaningful, right? If you can move the development rights off of a six acre piece, two of them. Onto a one acre piece, uh, with third acre. Sure, that's already got a house on it, or two, or a ten. You've got that six acre piece right there. And so you are creating a dent.
That is a positive thing you just created.
So that's the white areas.
You enabled.
Yeah, perfect. I love it. That's the white area.
With the size requirement though, I mean, I can stop fifty more acres.
So that, I do think that we do wanna put some limits on size requirement. On by right size requirements. I mean, somebody comes in and says, you know, I wanna do some condos here. Or I wanna do some duplexes here, if we do wanna do.
I can ask you go through rezoning.
Uh, uh huh, some, some different permission, right? So through the virtue of applying that overlay zone. They say, or we say, or whatever that is, let's make it some adjustments to this. So that puts condos in every one of these white spots or two. Through legislative, right? So you still have the authority and that's the important part, that you, well, the county commission still has the authority to say, uh, this is not the right area for condos. Single family group. And we can define that in the beginning. We say that right now, these white areas still gonna stay single family. In fact, everything that's allowed in the one acres or in the three acre zone, it's, it's gonna be applicable. And, uh, your minimum lot size instead of three acres is one acre. So you're right back to nineteen ninety-eight, but in order to get back to nineteen ninety-eight. You gotta go buy those units and move them to here. Okay, so that's, that's one incremental step. There's, there's still regulation, though. You're still saying, well, you can't, you don't can't have this guy. But you still, you can have a little more than what you currently. Right? The right to build or the right to sell.
So you, you know, if you have twenty acres, you've opened up sixty acres and stepped them all in.
Yeah.
You got a lot of the both sides of the.
Yeah. Yes, I, I like this and I think it's, it is a small step and, uh, Jeff, I wish we could go a big step. I wish there was a way to do that a little bit more predictability. With, with more predictability and the ability for us to make sure it doesn't create outcomes that were unintended, uh, consequences. But I think we bite this one off, and if this works, then we bite the next one off, duplexes or.
To succinctly phrase what it is we were just discussing.
Okay, so we're going back to, I, you know how I.
The thing that you're excited about that you wanna like, let's bite this off right now. What, what is that? Just succinctly put it.
Going back to those three options. In each of those three options, there is a built-in overlay zone. That has three zones, sending, receiving and quasi. So both sending and receiving. So right now, we're talking about the both sending and receiving. And it's just the white areas on this.
That's looking at a both area, not a either or.
Call it a free for all. Yeah.
And that's not the whole valley, it's just this valley floor white zone.
The wider, yeah, and that's just my idea of where it could be. You didn't get all of.
I, I only have three or three options here. Yes, I'm looking at that, yeah. Yeah.
There you go. There's my green lines. So actually, this is where I got in the fight with the printer. So I created, uh, one map that just shows existing open spaces. This is either open space zone or open space through a development agreement or open space through a subdivision plat. That's the green, the, the. Dark green. Some of you might have maps that don't have this pea green color. Right?
Yeah.
So. Yeah, so the pea green is the color that, that's the polygon I made that says, all right, this is sending. You could build in place or you now have a new right to not just build a place, but to sell instead of build. So adding to their wealth. In the white areas, it is on the smaller one, if you're looking at this. There you go, the, the, and then those white areas would be. Do both, do either.
What would be the harm in just presenting this and having a public hearing?
So that's, that's the direction I had, the thought that we would go. I'm open and flexible on however we wanna go. If we wanna go to the public and ask the question.
You're gonna be there for a long time and it's gonna be multiple meetings.
My concern is that this is gonna go in the same direction as the future land use map. Now, it doesn't mean that we should avoid. Talking to the public. The public should have a lot of opportunity, but. We have to go through a hearing process for this. And so what I've done in the past is. We have the maps, we have it available, anybody can review it, anybody can see it and give written comment on maps. Post on the website. And then when we go to the hearing, prior to the hearing, we hold an open house. It's just. The convention, you know, you just walk through the line and you look at the map. And we'll have it broken down into smaller pieces, so people could really take a close look before they go into the hearing. And then we have a hearing and.
It's just a prover and not approve, right? I mean, like, if you do it more of an open house thing, then people get to suggest alternative things instead of just approve, no, not approve.
Well, in a hearing, they could suggest alternative things as well, and they can submit comments to suggest alternative things. Um, what I have done in every process like this is I see those comments. And I make adjustments. Now, some of them say, don't do anything anywhere near anything. I can't do anything with that comment.
Right.
Um, not in my backyard, I can't do anything with that comment, but someone may say, you know what, this is a really great area for ascending area. You have it marked as a receiving area, maybe adjust that or turn it a little bit. Those kind of comments, I could do something with it. And I can get back to you guys and say, we have received a hundred comments to make adjustments and this is the adjusted map. But before we make the adjusted map, I want the planning commission map.
You can see where, I mean, you, all the loading and roofs that like, kinda, I mean, the roads are there.
It's low hanging for development. And it's, it's kind of low hanging for sending too.
But you gotta figure, we've got one third of the rights developed now. Where are we gonna put two thirds?
But there's a lot of, there's a lot of sending that can happen in these white zones.
And look at this, for example, the Ogden City property out on that peninsula.
It's green.
What criteria did he use to say that was only sending, it's not receiving?
Uh, the fact that the general plan doesn't show it as a village.
But even the village, that looks like you not. Just looking at the village here. You let those be white.
Oh, you might be looking at it differently. The villagers should show purple meat. But the purple, look really closely, so I'm sorry. Look, look at your small map, essentially.
Yeah, this mama.
We have a new printer on order. I was just told we have to buy the motor separate from a printer. Okay.
So send me this, which ones, all these are the.
Oh, I saw those, but if you look over here, the general plan it shows.
Oh, oh, sorry. Okay, huh, thank you. I'm not done. This is by no means done.
You're, you just started on the north end of the valley.
Basically.
Okay.
In fact, I probably got it pretty well done on the north end of the valley, all the way down to.
Yeah, you. There you go. You took delivery. I wanna make sure I understood why you were thinking. Quasi, right? And it's like. That's why I love it.
Okay, no, perfect. And if you want more white? Color, well, actually, I need to give you white. They give you a marker for white. Uh, P, I called it pea green.
Turn all of it white or just that part with the Ogden City?
Because the criteria used to make it green rather than white. Is. Not, it's subjective, it's not objective.
It's true. Yeah, now. The criteria that went into creating the criteria was subjective. This was objective because I've used the general plan to objectively define.
We recognize, in fact, I think the state says these general plans ought to be changed every five to ten years. And we're already at year seven.
Yeah. It's time for an adjustment.
It's time for an adjustment because they're never intended to be set in stone forever.
If you did it white, that would turn this whole floor into.
So instead of having. Sending only, receiving only, sending, receiving, we would just have two, we'd have sending, receiving. And receiving only.
Yeah, the receiving will stay the same. Which to your point, right? It was, hey, once they're in here, they shouldn't leave. It said the whole thing's white and we're trying to keep them in there. And you need to have. And the reality is that. But the majority of the receiving is going to be. And this is not gonna be a popular comment for some people, but Wolf Creek is a little bit more of a village area than it shows.
So the purple that I colored there is potential future growth. You're right, I didn't use the same rules in my own polygon drawing. I looked at vacant property that has the ability to continue to grow.
Okay.
And where existing density is. So FR three with condos. That's purple, cuz maybe those condo unit association folks that come back and say, you know what? If we can, let's put some more stuff in our open space, and they flip their open spaces condos.
But right now Wolf Creek's got a little cluster here. Yeah, because it's already kind of clustered in little groups. It's kind of got a, 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 it's not a boil, but it's kind of a.
Right.
It's a higher density.
Maybe that gets into all higher density.
A little bit of my vision is if you live around the golf course, you don't think you're in a high density area.
And it's what you'd expect when you live up there, right? You live in a condo, you have a high density area, there's maybe gonna be some more.
There's gonna be some open areas that make it really desirable.
So you're suggesting this purple go over here. Just because you've already got clusters of high development.
So. I.
And it's not popular for people that.
We're starting to get to where I. Going to get to a little bit later in the data. Could be golf courses do not.
Whatever they want, but.
Historically survived. John has already told me he loses. So at the point you've got some owner who is doing golf course development. Selling it as golf course development, making a lot of money on this real estate as golf course development, and then you're done, you're out. There's no motivation. I'm not saying that this is any crap, it's totally.
Right.
But there's no motivation if you're to own that. So what happens to the golf course? Well, we have. We have one, yep, we have one. We know what it looks like. Uh, now, that doesn't mean that, especially folks who live right next to that, uh, are zealously, uh, defending their open space. It's not a golf course, but so maybe it stays colored as a golf course, but there's a lot of land there and a lot of street connectivity. That could potentially provide a better future for a village center. In Wolf Creek. Now, I know that's not gonna be popular, and I don't know that that's something we should bite off today.
I don't know why that's not popular. It's, it's in the thing as a village.
Well, sorry, let me, let me back. It is shown in the thing.
But we're just starting to put those out. That's a brand new thing.
Correct, well, okay, let it back. The purple areas on the map right now, I don't think that we're gonna have a ton of resistance, um, getting a form based. Village code adopted for this purpose. I really don't. It's what happens to the golf course when the owner of it no longer sees a financial benefit. The golf course loses money every year.
Right.
And that every golf.
All golf courses do, yeah.
And so at some point in time, there's no financial incentive for anyone to own that. Do we think about some of that open space? As potential opportunities for connectivity, for, uh, different kind of main street feel. Uh, right now, the kind of main street we're looking at in Old Town, even New Town, even in Nordic are all pretty well off the beaten path. Uh, highway one fifty eight, we're gonna have a little bit of a hard time making a main street up there. And the other part of, uh, Wolf Creek that is a problem that people have continued to point out is it's so fragmented. In the future, and I'm, I'm not saying now, and I don't think we wanna try and bite it off now, but just think about it in your minds as. You continue to be planning commissioners. Finding ways to provide connections between the communities. In there with some kind of a commercial corridor that runs down the golf course with beautiful open spaces, uh, nice trail corridor. Uh, as well. I think will provide a future posterity of owners in, in Wolf Creek, an ideal. Uh, circumstance, it's not gonna be a bastardized conglomeration of a bunch of different people's ideas of a community. It'll be a community.
The, the, one thing I would not want to see happen is he's, there's already been density rights taken. Because the golf course is green space, not adding more density up there. Right?
It'd have to be transferred in.
It'd have to be transferred in and not creating more density just because you're wanting to create this form based village.
That's right.
So.
That's right, so, uh, and making sure everybody understands how density, um, uh, exists, especially if we've already got a commercial area. There's some CBR one property up there, and there's some CB two property up there. I think I'm telling you right. On the CBR one property, you can build essentially condos at twenty units the acre. Um, on the CB two property, there are no residential development rights allowed. And so, well, actually, no, never mind. You can get a night watchman for your commercial. Use, and so technically, if we wanna count that as one residential development right for every parcel in the CB two, great, it's not gonna hurt. That density would be. Would run with that land. So whoever owns that property would be able to build that density without going to do.
Isn't it already?
That is.
Taken though? Isn't the density for the whole golf course taken with the condos and stuff that are already there? There had to be open green space to.
Yeah.
Was already there.
Oh, I see, on the condo, sorry, I'm, I'm talking about the CBR one. That doesn't have the density.
Okay. And where's that?
Uh, right in the middle.
The golf course?
No, 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 uh, right.
Yeah.
Thank you, yep, uh, community center or whatever.
Yeah.
North of Moose Hollow Drive.
Yeah, something. Well, Brandy, well, Brandy bought that place and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's right there. You, don't quote me on this, but I think Brandy's is the CB two. And I think the rest of it around there is CBR one, if I remember correctly. There are rights that run with that CBR one. Some of them, John's looking to move over to COVID, right? So those rights stay, even if they go to the form base village, they stay, there are some. Any new rights above beyond that, he's gotta transfer in. Come over to where these condos are. Their existing units are what rights are assigned to the property, right? They don't have any more than that. Any new rights, they'd have to transfer in. So that, yeah, the fact that they. Created certain rights and gave up other rights, uh, for the golf course, we wouldn't give, we wouldn't re reward them. For that golf course development. And so let's just say, let's say the golf course goes to fun, I can't remember what. What, uh. Um, fairway that is, but that area there, somebody comes in and says, I've got a really great master plan. Uh, resort oriented mall with, um, luxury condos above and, and a great, um. Uh, commercial, uh, retail street, uh, front, um, below. And I wanna start a main street here. And I'm gonna transfer a hundred percent of units in, cuz they don't have any units, right? It's open space.
Yeah.
So I will transfer a hundred percent units in. Well, if we read the plan, I think the plan would support that. Now, it doesn't necessarily say. Actually, it does show that it's, uh, everything about it, I think, would comply with the plan. So. Yeah, I think we would support.
We're, we're getting close on time.
Thanks for watching that.
I suggest that all this pea green stuff turn white.
And, and the rules for the white is what's the minimum lot size you can get if you transfer?
Well, that's the next step. I like.
They're excited.
I like our discussion.
Yeah, great.
One acre, cuz I do recognize there is a problem on three acre lots, and a lot of junk and weeds and stuff.
Yeah.
Okay. And if the existing. Those turned into one acre by freeing up. Six acre somewhere else.
Yes.
That's a good thing, and it's gonna make a better neighborhood. And it's all voluntary.
Would you, you can do it. Would you be okay with that, Nathan?
See, see, now you're getting into detail, we, we'd have to.
Really?
Think about and flesh out.
Next meeting.
But I can see benefit for taking these artificially large lots. And taking away the, the bad parts of them.
Okay, the three acre lot is. Is not big enough to use. Like farm, and it's too big to.
Yeah, it's, it's a problem, and it's an artificial. This was a compromised deal on the three acres. So here we are, and we see what it looks like, and we don't like it.
It's funny because we just had this conversation with Western Weaver about one acre.
Well.
Way too small.
It was the same. Battle we're having today. I don't want any development around me. Okay, down zone everything for five acres or something, and, oh, yeah. But then they came up with septic systems that can work on.
Well, so that's what I wanted to address in this conversation.
That's what you thought.
Regardless of how well they can get septic systems to work, um, part of me wants to say. We should. We should wait. On. Lots that are smaller than three acres until sewer gets there. Sewer's gonna be coming. It's part of the master plan, it's gonna be valid.
I think it's the health department and their regulations and the state regulations that tell us. How small a lot you could have with septic.
Yeah, I wish I could tell you that I've got a faith in that system.
They are the ones charged by law to regulate that. Cuz we know that we've got one acre lots on septic, and they work like, we got a whole town there of nine hundred. Lots in Huntsville on three quarters of an acre, they're all in septic.
Yeah.
And. There's.
Okay.
There's no evidence that those things are failing and causing huge health.
So if the health department allows it.
But that's, it's, it's just like water. The state engineers in charge of water. If your well starts. Pulling water from somebody else's well, and he's got a senior right, the state engineer, shut you off, okay? They take care of that. But here, we allow that whole peninsula out there, that Ogden City thing. Yeah, there could be some wonderful things out there that some landowner decides he wants to do, so. Let him figure it out. They're smarter than we are.
Right, and Laurent is telling us, Lawnd over at Nordic is telling us five hundred units, he's, that's enough for him to justify a package of treatment facility. Why wouldn't it be enough?
Exactly. So good things can happen if we don't. Regulate, now we're gonna subsidize.
Okay.
Okay, so just let, let the market, let the landowners figure this out. Okay, they still got this ton of rules they've got to comply.
I know, well, they don't, they haven't enabled advanced treatment systems yet, and so as soon as they do, maybe we'll see a huge benefit from that.
But, um. Well, I was looking at some, anyway, we don't have time to get into that. But. As a starting point. One acre minimum, yeah, that's something for discussion.
Okay. I like it, uh, clustered, not clustered.
Yeah, you can cluster.
Choice between like, rule for clustering or just allow it to be what they choose?
What, whatever the clustering rules are.
No, no, sorry. Do we make, do we, do we force a cluster, or do we say, if you wanna do one acre traditional, do one acre traditional?
Yeah, what, whatever.
There's benefits to saying just do a cluster instead of a, a traditional, the benefit being.
Cluster, your cluster requires more land than that three acres on it.
I understand.
Okay. When I read the clustering, I got the impression that, okay, you've got, say, twelve acres. Oh, we wanna cluster them. Okay, twelve divided by three is four. No, if you're gonna cluster, you gotta have. Uh, more open space.
More open space.
You can't put four there because you're, okay, four would be four, four houses. Okay, four times. Anyway.
Oh, because of septic systems, because of the area required for.
The area required for all this other stuff. So clustering has got a disincentive.
Yeah.
But.
I'm working with the health department to enable shared systems and common.
Large, large, or a lot averaging is helpful.
Great.
Because then you can be creative.
What's that?
I got a shared system approved for coming.
How long ago?
Oh, last year.
Is it located in your common area? Their rule is it's gotta be on your lot or on one of the lots that's being affected, so they're.
It's anyway, good things could happen, but regulations are kind of impeding good things from happening. So, yeah, one, one acre is a discussion thing for a minimum long size.
Options. I like it. I think we're moving in a really good direction. Um, minimum lot size, question mark. One last thing in the last thirty seconds. Weaver Basin Water, did I already tell you guys this, that they changed the rules? They just adopted new rules. Uh, I told you this.
Weaver Basin Water is the people who own.
They're the.
All the water that, okay.
You have to get an exchange application through them in order to get a well.
Okay.
So all new wells moving forward. Have to have and are limited to point six five acre feet. Um, of water. Sorry, for a, let me qualify that for a single family dwelling. If you're drilling well for single family dwelling. You have to have point six five acre feet of water, and you cannot have more than point six five acre. Sorry, it used to be one. Point four five for the house, point five five for the yard, and that point five five waters, eight thousand square feet of property or stock. They changed that point four five for the house. And two thousand square feet of irrigating.
Correct, cutting back on what you can do.
Yeah, you can't have more than that amount of grass.
So if you want to irrigate pasture land, you gotta have.
Secondary water.
Or buy more rights, right?
They're not allowing more rights if it's far. But if you already have rights, then. Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank.
When did that happen?
Two, three weeks ago, they told us.
So if a guy's got an acre and a half of the water to a well, you split that up and won't buy anymore. I wonder, I don't know. I would imagine so. If you're gonna fort, usually you're gonna, you got to change it from stock to culinary, it'd be the only.
Yeah, I mean, you have the water rights, but I'm just wondering.
Now, instead of having to go buy three more, maybe just take one away from your house.
Oh.
And honestly, it should work better, you should have an operation. It'd actually be better, right?
Thank you. So we can talk more after the meeting. That was my third second. Or we didn't.
Oh, we don't usually do that. Okay, you guys, Commissioner, uh.
Foreman.
Foreman, Commissioner. John Henry and Johnson and Burton are here. You're smiling, so. It was on the agenda, wasn't it?
It was on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But you follow again, just like I do.
Okay, thank you all. I think that was really productive. I appreciate the comments.
I think so too.
Sorry, I appreciate.
You guys have, uh, mats if you wanna do some coloring and send them over to me, please do, but if you're.